This, this is something that I guess I'll accept some blame for having this on the agenda. And I want to make sure to clarify any misunderstandings when it comes to this. For some time, this board has been engaged in the controversies of attendance zones and who should go where, and schools and parents getting upset, and people being concerned about, "Well, my child, and I bought my house here because, and because I wanted to go to this school and that school." One of the things, I think, if we're talking about being forward-thinking and as giving direction, we need to at least have a policy and an understanding in place, well, how do we convey to the public that there are certain forces that cause us to have to make changes in attendance zones? What are those? Let's, let's understand those and let's convey to the public, if we can, that if certain things occur, oh, if certain things, if certain things occur, if certain things occur, here's what we are more likely to do. So, we let the public know in advance that if growth occurs in a particular area or some changes occur in a particular area, the board would have to initiate actions to correct the problem, to address the problem. Hopefully, we'll go through this exercise and we'll come to some consensus that this is how we're going to move forward, and that we can publicize this and alert the public that these are the forces that if this occurs, we're going to have to take action. Whether none of us around this board, these are the triggers, the things that cause change to occur. That's what we want to come up with today in this session. With that, who's on first? Is it you, fellas?
You, second.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning.
What we did is we put together a suggestion of how we want to utilize the triggering devices that we have that the board approved on March 19, 2011. The board already approved percentages of capacity reaches a certain percentage of what we were going to do. I think what Mr. Washington is saying is that there's, even though everyone knows when they go into a, move into a housing area, they're buying their house to go to a particular school. In areas of high growth, and I'll use Bluffton as an example, you're not, it's not solid that you moved into this area and you're going to go to Bluffton Elementary for, you know, A through five. That's unfortunate.
I think they need you to use the mic. Miss, mic, okay.
Is it on? It's not coming on.
She have the magic touch. Thank you. So, what we're trying to do is, is be a little bit more transparent, a little bit more obvious to our community, that there are certain areas that will be impacted if there is unusual growth. We all know, another example besides Bluffton would be the Ladies Island area with Cusaw and Beaufort High. So, what we, rather than stating that if you live in this particular neighborhood, you may not go to Beaufort High and you would go to such and such, what we thought we would do is modify, this is just an example, a suggestion or recommendation on our part, is that we would have impact areas that would be highlighted to the public. We would, again, publish these on our website. We would put them out to the Realtors Association. And so, if you move into this area, it's likely that something could occur if there is high growth in that particular school cluster. We would do these maps for all areas of the county. What we have shown you is just an example of one, which would be Hilton Head, because first of all, this is just something that we're recommending as an option to do. You can also see where we did some modifications to 8.3 and that would incorporate the language of impact areas and then publish the maps. Every year, in October, we present to you an annual report, and it's based on PE 8.3, where we will review the annual boundaries, the student boundaries. So, this would be a great opportunity at that time to redo any of the impact areas based on the latest growth information that has been determined by our planning coordinator. So, that's what we have done, Mr. Washington. I don't know if this addresses the needs that the board is wanting to do to make sure that our public is aware. It is a little bit less specific because we certainly don't want to mislead any of the members of the community by putting out a definite move when we all know, especially in the Bluffton area, it's very hard to predict the shifting of people from one area to another.
Major piece added. We'll go back, Robin, to the middle piece. In March...
What is it, March? In March, the Board of Education adopted some parameters, a policy, and what you said was you approved the following, that for schools that were over 90 percent capacity, we would have no additional students. If they move into the area, that's a different conversation, but you know, additional students from elsewhere. Seventy-five to 89 percent of the schools, they're still able to accept students. Below 74 percent, you all directed us to have strong recruiting. To that end, we developed brochures on the individual identity of that school, its niche, its special features, and we marketed those schools for other students. And if a school were less than 50 percent full, that you all would consider it as foreclosure or consolidation. You adopted this in March, remember?
This was never incorporated in the policy. It's never actually written in 8.3.
Then that, we didn't follow through.
Right.
If the board took action, then we should have done that.
Those are the points that I want to go.
Yes, sir. So, if, if, I didn't know that till just now, but I apologize to the board. If you took action in March and we did not bring it back into 8.3, I apologize. We'll fix it. This is, the goal is for us to incorporate that into our language. I thought that's where we were. But I want to also add a consideration for the board. What we would love for you all to look at is the possibility of adding this language that we have, you have this in hard copy in front of you as well as on the screen, to annually review grade configurations, which you do, and school attendance boundaries, which you do, and this is the annual work plan that says thou shalt do it. And what we are suggesting that we add is, and future impact areas, which gets to what Mr. Washington was just talking about and fellas alluded to, to ensure reasonable balances of student enrollment, wise use of resources, and equity of high-quality learning opportunities, submitting recommended changes to the board for approval in accordance with the district's agreement with the Office of Civil Rights. That is implied, we would like to make it explicit. The annual review would incorporate the following guidelines, and you'll see in red our suggestions. You already did the 110 over capacity. We implement a plan for change in student assignment. That actually should be in red, fellas, right?
If I knew.
We didn't do that before, last, in March.
Anything not done would be in red.
Yes, sir, except that we missed a line. I'm sorry, fellas, go back to the 110.
I was looking at it. We had it.
No, we didn't.
Oh, no. That's the wrong.
That should be in red. 110 over capacity, that we would begin to look at a change in student assignment as a suggestion. Over 90 percent, no additional students, stays the same. We would suggest that you all consider between 75 and 89 percent target level, that's the optimal range. They still can accept students, with specific number of choice slots determined annually. Last year, we did not have choice slots. You all said we're going to close choice for one year. We would suggest that you all think about, not this coming year, but the following year, 13, 14, because 12, 13 is already in, the kids are already enrolled. But for 13, 14, to look at this, to think about allowing us to identify a few number of choice slots annually for those schools that are in optimal range, for instance, Ladies Island Elementary School. Growth levels, strong recruitment, we're still going to continue those seven, those seven schools. Less than 50 percent suggests that we, again, leave it as you all have already voted, but add some language that says carefully examine the school in relation to neighboring schools, so that we add that as an explicit. Those are our recommended impact area. We define it there as a geographic area with a potential to have changes in student assignment by grade configuration or student assignment boundaries within five years. High growth. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Mr. Wilson? Mr. Chairman, please, let's make sure we use the mic. This is being recorded.
Mr. Chairman, honestly, here from people, we didn't know this, we didn't know that. One of the things I'd like to add to this policy is that every time we do update this policy, or at least every year, in particular, we're giving direction on what areas are being over capacity, that we send an email out to the town fathers or the county people because they're the ones who control growth in their area. Plus, we send it out to every real estate person. Real estate people are supposed to tell people the truth as far as that. Many times, I hear, well, jeez, you know, we, we didn't know that. We were told this is the school. Well, let's make sure the community and the people dealing, the people moving in are well aware of what's happening, and we keep a constant communication. Having it on our website is one thing, but being active or proactive with letting other people know where there's problems coming up and what our policies are, you know, will protect them.
Okay. Mr. Wilson, I ask that you look at page two, the very last sentence on page two. What do you want added to that? Because it does say that we would put this on our website for future home buyers. It would also be distributed to our local Realtor Association, and you're saying all elected, all municipalities.
All municipalities and counties, because they're the ones that are, they're the ones that are responsible for the growth in their area.
All right. So, what I'm hearing, I want us to be specific, is that you're recommending that we expand that last sentence to include local elected municipalities and county officials.
Plus, once a year, not, you know, we can send out, there's no timeframe on when we send this out.
Mr. Wilson, every October, we bring PE 8.3 to the board. At that time, once the board receives the report, we could send this notification out.
That's what I'm saying, but I'm saying that's, then that's what we want in here. We want the message that, so that we're sending it out to other people, once a year.
We don't want it mistaken. We want it to be in the policy.
In the policy.
I see.
That everybody should have communicated to, and nobody can say, "Well, you never told us we bought property, we did this, we did that." Let's make sure we have good communication, and if we put it in the policy, that every year it has to be. And also, if it's in the policy, and one town's growing real fast, we can't control that. They can, we can't.
Rivers?
Yeah. On the, I guess it's the fourth bullet, what it says about strong recruitment, strong recruitment, Dr. Truesdale or Ms. White, hopefully, this is not just a process question, but one of the things in, in marketing a school that has challenges, I believe the only way you can do that is by bringing in a diversified group of students where it doesn't appear that a school has been left with the lower end of the children. And so, my question is, in reference to the strong recruiting, what are we going to do to possibly change the way some schools are viewed? Because unless that is done, it'll be very hard to recruit students into that particular school.
Yes, sir. I'm going to answer that question.
What I'm saying, you can answer that, but that's one of the things, the areas that we need get into, achieve the gaps, and other things we really need to, those are factors that we need to discuss.
I'll hold it until later.
But if you, if you want to give a quick, but that's...
A quick response would be, when we, you may remember Beaufort Elementary School, we put Ames in. We put in a program that's so wonderful, people drop from all over for it. At Broad River this year, we're having, we already had immersion Chinese, we're adding immersion Spanish. We have immersion Spanish going in at St. Helena, and we put Montessori in at Beaufort Elementary School. IB is in the Hilton Head Schools, and I think that's all, my examples.
Okay. But we do need to get into the discussion.
I'll follow up on that later.
Yes, sir.
I have Ms. Bush, and then Ms. Evans.
Mike, in terms of, I think what Mr. Wilson said regarding who do we notify in terms of changes in our attendance zones, the Realtors and other entities, the county, the city fathers. What I found, as I went around to collect my signatures for reelection or my petition, sending out a map is not getting it. In 13, 14, we're going to rezone, it's already approved to rezone areas of Bluffton. Buck Island Road, for instance, will be going to, will be pulled out of Red Cedar, and it will be going to Bluffton Elementary. It's not enough, in my opinion, to put that on our website and send it to Realtors and send it to the city fathers. We have to find a way to be sure that all those families that are going to be affected by this change actually get something in their hands. Not just a map, but let me know that number five, Bush Lane, which is where I live, is not going to a different school come 12, 13. That, let's, let's be sure that we're looking at covering all of our bases when we make that change.
On page one, you notice, and as background information, one of the things they cite is, is PE 9.5, and the fact that when we go through this exercise, one of the things that we are committed to doing was to have formed committees and community groups, particularly using our SICs and other methods or avenues of communication to convey any anticipated change. We have consciously, as a board, said that we wanted to make sure that SICs particularly play a role in that, but we've also had the occasion that we've created community advisory groups. When it came to the closing of schools, we generated those. So, that's, that's in there. That proactive piece that you talk about in terms of being, of providing communication is there.
We need to go a step farther, Mr. Chairman.
What do you recommend?
I recommend that we know, we should know, every child is going to be affected by the change. Send those parents a letter, put it in their hands, let those parents know, come October of this year, that August of 2013, your child will no longer attend Red Cedar, they will be reassigned to Bluffton Elementary. I think we need to do all the things you just said, but in addition to that, we know every child that will be affected by this change. Somehow, those parents need to get their own personal letter, that's all I'm saying.
And what I'm suggesting, fellas, I'll let you go, that one of the things we, we don't want to do, I think that's an administrative process that we should expect to occur. As a policy, we would expect the administration to communicate with all impacted or affected parties. And if we do it that way as a policy, then it's up to them to have the administrative rule to designate and identify all of those. But you don't want to put in your policy things that are so specific that you have to turn around and change them frequently. But, but I think that if we say all impacted parties ought to be notified, then they figure out how to do that.
Thank you, Mr. Washington. That's, that's, this is our, this is our marching orders, and what we see this as is we must, every year, review our attendance boundaries, and any notification of, of families that are impacted, then we are going to do what you're suggesting. That is, every year, if, when we do this and we see we have, the board has to vote on new attendance boundaries, then we go out and do the community meetings, we send the letters, we get notification. I think we've experienced over the past year that we need to do a better job in communicating. We acknowledge that that wasn't, it needed to be handled more at a district level rather than an individual school level.
Ms. Bush, I think what, what you are saying and what's legitimate is that we pass the policy of contacting impacted areas, then we want to see, you might want to see, what's the administrative procedures to carry that out. Then you would have comfort in knowing that we are doing that, that each part's doing its piece. We do the policy, they do the other piece.
Mr. Chairman, because it's going to be a major change in my area, I would like to see that, the procedure on that. Thank you.
Anyone else? I think I had Ms., I didn't have any. Ms. Evans, did you, on attendance zones?
Yes, sir. Well, mine goes beyond attendance zones. But anyhow, I thought the decision that we made last year to restrict choice was a very good one because it has given us an opportunity to kind of settle down and see where everybody is and, and that kind of thing. I am hoping that in response, I think what Mr. Rivers was raising, and maybe with some others, is that this fall, after we get started, and since we're going to open choice up again for next August, that we take a look if there's any other schools of choice that we want to develop, you know, and, and put out there for the community to consider. And I will only say this, we've got two charter schools now that both have K-8 configurations. It seems to me that there's people in our community who are maybe looking at that kind of an environment for their children. So, part of the issue might be, is would that be an appropriate school of choice for us to develop? You know, whether we want to develop a K-8 school someplace that people could make the choice to go to versus the configuration we have now of K-5 and then 6, 8 kind of thing. It's only a suggestion, but I, I think it goes along with Mr. Rivers' concerns about how do we recruit, and, and I think it just goes along with the whole issue of when we open choice back up, do we want to take a serious look at whether there might be other choices? I like what we're doing with foreign language. I think that should attract some people.
And I think that's, you're exactly right. That's why later on, I think there'll be opportunities for us to explore that, and we have to look forward.
And, Mr. Washington, I just want to make sure that you all understand the what's in red that Mr. Evans is referring to is our suggestion. The board hasn't enacted it yet, so unless you enact it, we would not be reopening choice. But that was our suggestion, is that we view it and that we limit the number of slots, specify the number of slots annually that Carol would do on her projections.
At some point, I'm going to ask for a motion to adopt specific recommendations that have been presented. Now, we've already modified one aspect of this in terms of making sure that everyone who's impacted be notified in a timely manner. Are there any other adjustments? And then I'm going to ask that, once we vote on this, that we do get before the end of this session what I call a clean version?
Yes, sir.
Because there, there's a lot of stuff in here that, that's not necessarily your main, but that we get a clean policy version to look at. Ms. Bush?
Can you just elaborate more on, on the fifth bullet? The 50 percent closure consolidation level, when you say carefully examine schools in relation to neighboring schools?
Which page are you on? Page one?
I'm, I'm under the recommendation of PE 8.3, the red...
Okay. All right. Page one. Annually review grade, that's page one. At least PE 8.3?
Yes. The fifth bullet, just...
Fifth bullet. It's on page two.
I think the red...
The red point, yes, your red edition. Carefully examine schools in relation to neighboring...
Was there a question? This is question, sorry.
And just elaborate on, on your addition to that.
On the, you have...
Bullet five.
Bullet five.
50 percent closure consolidation level.
Oh, now he...
No, I'm right above it.
Oh, 50 to 74 percent?
50 percent closure consolidation level.
No, right below that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
The fifth bullet, thank you.
I'm sorry. It would, what we would do is exactly what we did when we went through the school closure and consolidations with Shellpoint. We would examine all the schools and go through a filter, like we did, and, and determine what schools would need to, or eligible, that's a horrible word, I'm sorry, for closure. And so, we would look at schools in the surrounding area. If you recall, when we did the school closure process, Shellpoint was not the number one candidate for closure based on the filtering that we did. But it happened to be a school in the, you know, neighboring area. That's what that means. Does that make, does that help?
Okay, yeah.
So, if there's a school, and I'm going to make this up, that, let's say, Port Royal drops down to 49 percent, we would look at all the areas in that area, but we would probably look at the district as a whole first and foremost, because we want to make sure that we're examining the entire district. But, of course, if Port Royal then became the number one, we would also look at neighboring schools. Yep. Did I say that good, in a good way, Carol?
I've...
We always look at all schools when you're going to go through that process.
Let me ask one question before Ms. Evans and Mr. Rivers. What do we do with, do we have any schools 110 percent over capacity right now?
No, we do now.
Okay.
We will in a year, in a month, in a little period.
All right. And we know that right now?
Yes, sir.
And we're beginning, what I'd be interested in is starting to receive some ideas of how, how to address that.
We...
Go ahead, I'm sorry. Mr. Evans, and then Ms. Rivers.
I may be wrong, but from my experience, the bullet that concerns me the most is the second one, the 90 to the 110 percent capacity, because I think this is where we get in trouble with high-impact areas like Bluffton. You know, people are there, so we have a, I'm just going to give a scenario. We have Red Cedar, and it's at 92 percent. Okay? So, it falls in, inside that. Now, somebody comes along and the town of Bluffton approves the construction of 30 units, okay, that are all fall in the present Red Cedar attendance area. My understanding is those students still go to Red Cedar because the attendance area hasn't been changed?
If it were something that occurred just overnight, yes. And what we would do, though, is in the, in our annual planning, if we see something that's coming in, Carol's going to be looking at the numbers sooner than our annual planning and give us a heads up, first of all.
If permitting is granted.
Right. She meets with the planning groups on a regular basis, so she's going to know about that, and she's going to start, you know, looking at the capacities, well, I think she already does this, more than annually. And so, at that point, though, yes, they would be at Red Cedar, but what we would be doing is bringing to the board exactly that, saying, "These are some recommendations for attendance zone modifications, student assignment modifications." And then we would begin the community meetings and the notification, and the board officially adopting new student assignments.
With OCR's approval.
With, thank you, Mr. Washington, with OCR approval.
But I, I guess my base question is... But I guess my base question is, if they still fell within the 90 to 110%, those students in that new area would continue to go to Red Cedar?
Absolutely.
My second question, and I'm supposing the third page is a real scenario?
It is.
Or is it, okay. So, when we already know how crowded the Bluffton schools are, because I remember the discussion last summer when we were thinking about moving some Bluffton kids to empty seats at Hilton Head at the middle school and high school level, and the concern about travel and everything, I'm looking at this scenario saying, okay, if they're not going to go to Hilton Head and we can't go to Bluffton because it's already packed, then that seems to beg the question of when we start a discussion about new buildings?
What?
Or additions.
What you're going to see is, you know, this shows for the Hilton Head area, that's their impact zone. When you're going to look at the cluster for Bluffton, you're going to see the impact area be the entire Bluffton zone.
Yeah.
And when we get, when we start, well, we already are, the Board has seen it last year, when we were telling you about the Bluffton Middle situation, the McCracken situation, and the Bluffton High situation, we already have plans that we've got to do, I think the vote of the Board was we were going to place mobiles at Bluffton High. That was what we were going to do. And so, once we get to 110, I mean, obviously, we're going to have to start, before 110, bringing to you a long-term solution. Because if you're over 100, you're out in the mobiles. And so, then we start, we need to start talking about permanent facilities and how we're going to handle it.
I want to remind us though, that one of the things, and you correct me if I'm misstating this, we said we would explore every alternative, virtual schools, courses, what do you call them?
Dual tracks.
Dual track, all kinds of things that we would explore prior to us looking at building new, building new buildings. Because the trend is to move away from so many buildings anyhow. But it goes back to you and Mr. Rivers' concern about, well, what kind of alternatives do we have? What kinds of program, what kinds of things do we look at before we look at building a new building? Okay? So, I just want to remind us. Mr. Burns?
And one other.
And Ms. Rivers, you're next, I'm sorry.
One other areas, you know, I wouldn't want us to forget about schools that are under capacity.
Right.
Before building new schools.
Right, and exactly. And that's, all of that goes into the mix. What the Superintendent said about marketing and putting programs and having programs to attract students, just as we did at Bufordell, when it was under capacity and the addition of Ames and some other things has brought that up significantly. And there are a couple of other schools who've done the same thing. And that's, those are the things that we explore before we talk about building new buildings.
When we do our annual review, we look at all of this. So, we would, Mr. Burns, we would be, if we're showing some schools at 110, we're going to look at all the schools and see, is there any way to change the student assignments without new facilities? The other thing that's out there also in the Bluffton area now is the new high school, the Catholic High School. And we've got to see how that impacts.
What impacts that has. Right. Ms. Rivers?
I'm good.
You're good? Okay. Now, I'm looking for us to take some action now. We promised that we would take some action today, so I'm looking for a motion from someone. Unless you're not finished with discussion. And technically, we should have had the motion before we had the discussion. I understand that, okay? But I'm now ready to at least entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Ms. Bush.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept the recommended changes to PE 8.3 as recommended by the Administration.
Second. We have a motion by Ms. Bush and a second by Mr. Campbell to accept the recommendations of the Administration relative to changes in PE 8.3 and all of the attendant wording or actions that go with it, okay? And implied in that that it will be brought back in policy, in a clean policy format for review and final adoption. Is that, is that the intent of the motion, Ms. Bush, Mr. Campbell? Do you concur?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, please indicate by raising your hands. Unanimous? Thank you very much. That's good. So, we will get the clean version sometime by August 7th meeting. I'm not going to put pressure on you to have it done by the end of the day, okay? Okay, good, do that. Now, guess what? We are a little bit, I don't believe this, but we're actually a little bit ahead of schedule. Can we now introduce?
We're going.
What are we doing?
What's next on your agenda, Mr. Washington?
The next on your agenda is grade floor.
Employee Effectiveness Plan Development. The principals are not here to present.
No, no. Oh, what about IPAD? You don't want to do that?
We can, we can do that.
Okay.
Actually, I just want Cory to do something else.
Oh. Well, let's see.
A sip for Dr. Rosberg.
Go ahead with what you have, what you're prepared to do.
Yes, sir. Okay, so, in your folders, you know, you have a brown folder for Robin. You have in there a blue-colored folder with those stripes in green that says Employee Effectiveness Plan Development. You don't have anything in it, as I am going to give you an understanding. Your own return to? No numbers, you are part of that. It's just your mind. You got it, you got the special.
There's nothing in it. I know.
I was looking for.
Still, I read it.
Yeah. Quick, you're a quick read.
The one we have, two documents.
We have two documents, the Superintendent's telling us.
It's coming around.
She's not carrying her mic with her.
We have teacher voices, we are good.
She's claiming to have.
You have two documents. One is a draft of a grant that the State Department of Education is developing called Teacher Incentive Fund IV. It's a partnership memorandum of understanding, and I'm going to walk you through it. The other one is a document, because we did not put these in your mood room, so you probably have not yet had time to read them because they went in later. I'll let Robin do her work there with others in the room. The first document I'd like you to take a look at is a memorandum from Dr. Rosberg that reads Employee Pay for Performance. To remind the Board, you passed directive to Administration some time ago, I want to say March, Mr. Washington, right?
Yes, March.
Directing us to develop a pay-for-performance plan for all employees by the year 2014. You said within two years, we said 2014.
Initiate two years to develop, implement third year.
Actually, I think the motion said within two years, so what we're going to talk about today is exactly what he just said, which is the timeline, a schedule by which you all might want to talk, because we are one coming back to you all with a discussion document. So, the first piece of that is a brief overview of the TAP program to remind you all where we are. TAP is a teacher advancement program, national grant of 30-plus million dollars to the state of South Carolina. Buford County is 10 million of that 30-plus million to the state of South Carolina. The program is in 15 of our schools, and the teachers earn additional compensation for student improvement, as well as observational data, as well as school-wide improvement. And there are three kinds of teachers. A career teacher, which is a traditional classroom teacher, and teachers are in that particular category, a mentor teacher, and a master teacher. You will see there are the stipends that individuals receive as part of the grant. If they also, then they can earn beyond that pay for performance of students. If you look on page, the second page, you will see that the incentive stipends have several ranges. For a career teacher, it ranges from $526 to $4,200. And they receive these checks, roughly the 1st of December of 2011, and previous years in different schools. Buford Elementary, Buford Middle School, for instance, has been a TAP school for seven years. Master and mentor teachers also participate in the incentive. But in addition to the flat amount on the first page, and theirs would range from $562 to $3,500. Assistant principals can earn as much as $10,900, and a principal as high as like $13,900. The total TAP payouts last fall was $859,000. So, that reminds you where we were when we had this last conversation.
Can I ask you a question?
Please use the mic, Ms. Bell. Just pull it over.
Last year, the total payout was 859, and right here, it says last year's total was 585.
So, Mrs. Bell, on the front, $585,000 is the amount that is a stipend. You get a stipend if you're a mentor teacher and a master teacher. The role of a mentor teacher is to help your friends. So, suppose Mr. Burns is a mentor and he's helping the class with you. A master, and he teaches, he still teaches all his classes and he helps you. So, he gets $5,000 for doing that. That's on the front page. Plus, he's eligible for the incentive on the second page. The second page can be anywhere from $562 to $3,500.
In addition?
In addition.
Oh, I didn't get that, okay.
The master teacher is relieved of his or her duties, and they teach pedagogy. They teach teachers how to teach stronger. They do a lot of the evaluations, and they get $10,000 plus their salary, plus the incentive on page two. So, you could see that our payout this year was a quick four million before Christmas to our teachers. 100% of these funds went to our teachers, our educators. None of the funds were kept at the district level or administration. That's one of the hallmarks of our district. We have tried very, very hard to assume all the duties, to take the duties off the schools and to put the pay back into the classrooms as much as we possibly can. Mostly, the reason we sought this grant, agreed to participate with the state, was because we have not been able to give our teachers an increase for multiple years until this year. Thank you to this Board, thank you to our County Council, and our General Assembly for the 2%.
I don't know whether you're finished or not.
Are you finished?
I'm just getting through.
Okay, if we will, let's finish, because I do have a number of questions, and I've got Ms. Evans and Ms. Bush and myself.
You all are very familiar with the South Carolina teacher salary schedule and cost of living adjustments in the center of the document. What we try to do in these documents is give you the history in case you're reading it new. The General Assembly sets the teacher salary scale in the state of South Carolina, as you all know. We must abide by it, it's not an option. And the General Assembly gives districts the flexibility to not give a step last year for the first time in the history of South Carolina and again this year. Pay for performance options, we researched a few of them for you as we begin to talk about how we would move forward. Richland School District II and Charleston County have explored the pay for performance plan. Richland II has had one for years wherein administrators have pay for performance incentives. Charleston County is going to pilot them this fall. So, Dr. Rosberg's recommendation is that the Board of Education identify as your category under your PE, under your performance evaluate, performance expectation, your annual governance, you select every year in summer, which programs do you want studied? We're suggesting this year, you select pay for performance for teachers and educators as your study evaluation, and that we commission the evaluation to be done and brought back to you all this fall, or as Mr. Washington said, implementation in 2013, '14, if the Board agrees. The second document you have is a parallel track. These are not connected, except in content. The State Department of Education is seeking a TIP grant. You all may regret that there are more Race to the Top, Race to the Top grant options available at the U.S. Department of Education. The State Department of Education is submitting a grant that will be a companion document to the one that they have already submitted that yielded 30-plus million dollars in TIP III. This is the TIP IV fund. It's a partnership that they're inviting us to participate in. And what they are developing is, you all have probably heard Dr. Zay speak about his desire to move away from cost of living or automatic stepping pieces and more towards a merit pay system. This is a piece of that. What this is, is that South Carolina's TAP program would work to accomplish the goals of the TIP grant, which is to attract and retain high-quality teachers and principals in high-poverty, high-needs schools. That goes to what Mr. Rivers was speaking about earlier. And enhance leadership and career advancement opportunities among teachers in high-poverty, high-needs schools. Maintain student achievement and improve it in high-poverty, high-needs schools. You see the theme here, okay? So, what this asks if Buford would like to participate is for us to intentionally implement the four TAP elements of attracting and retaining high-quality teachers, enhancing leadership, improving student achievement, and enhancing the preparation of principals for high-poverty, high-needs schools. That we would commit to being partners in this human capital management program, is what they're proposing to call it. And the human capital management program is no later than year three of the grant, so that means this is going in in 2012, '13, so that by the year 2015, we would have what you have already directed us to do, which is a pay for performance program for educators.
You said this comes under the program Race to the Top?
TIP, the section of it, Mr. Campbell called Teacher Incentive Fund.
So, the state did accept this from the federal government?
No, sir, this is a grant app, a competitive grant. It has not been mailed, it goes into Marlin. It's an application for the funds. You're wondering about the entitlement.
So, we have to make the motion to?
Whatever.
So, when this came from Washington, I thought someone had said that either the governor or someone said either more they accepted that first.
Yes, sir. What came from the U.S. Department of Education originally put these funds out is, here are some funds that are going to states. You get it, flow through. Here are some funds that are competitive application. That's the part we're talking about. The ones you're speaking of are the ones that were supposed to flow to South Carolina and we refuse.
So, they're going to accept one?
They're going to compete for a different class. Yes, sir.
Excuse me.
No, yes, sir.
Yeah, Mr. Rivers, Mr. Evans, did you want to get in now too?
Not on this part, I've got a question.
Okay, I guess what you're saying is the one that we refuse was for everybody, and what we're applying for now, it depends on how, what the grant is written, sort of like.
This is a competitive.
This is a competitive grant, that would be accurate. Yes, sir. So, what this grant would do, if we choose to participate, is to ensure funding for these programs, not at the level that you just saw on Jackie's memo, because that's not sustainable, that's not scalable. That is for a defined period of time, so set that aside, even if it's parallel, it's not related. And that these district activities would create, this means that all of our schools would be on the same rubric. The rubric is a set of criteria by which each judge effective teaching in the classroom. The TAP rubric is one that we are using now in 15 of our schools. It's working. It's a very strong teacher evaluation system based on observation in the classroom plus student achievement plus whole-school improvement. Our teachers say it's the strongest evaluation system that they've ever seen to improve teaching in the classroom. So, what we have an opportunity to do is to be partners in this grant. It does not obligate us to move forward, it just obligates us to be partners. It does not obligate us to move forward, it just obligates us to be part of the application on the front end. You can't join afterward, you can always drop out, or the state might not get you.
I'd like to, I'd like to make some comments and try to tie in. I guess it ties in both pieces of information provided, but it goes back to me to address the intent of the original motion by the board, and I need you guys to tell me whether I'm off-base or not, because lots of times, you know I'm off-base, okay? So I want to make sure I'm on-base. First of all, I thought that the, we asked for a two-year development period, being this year and next year, 2012, 2013, and 2013, '14 for development, and implementation 2014-15. That's, that's the first thing I thought, okay? Number one. Number two, I thought that the intent was to not just look at supplementing compensation, but to look at compensation in general, and saying that your compensation, that their effectiveness will determine your level of compensation. Now, so, and the superintendent has tried to educate me about the difference between pay-for-performance and something else, I forgot the term she, merit pay, okay? And, and I guess my intent was, shouldn't we, you know, there, I guess there's the floor that everyone would get, that if you're effective, if you're, if you're, if you're being effective, we should not have anyone who's not effective, but there are some who are effective, there's some more who are highly effective, and some other level of effectiveness. But you don't keep folks who are not effective. And I thought we are looking, we're going to be looking at, how do we go about developing a system of compensation for those levels of performance that we get from people to incentivize? You, you reach this level, this is how you get, get paid. I also thought that what we're going to do was to, and, and the reason, and, and what I was looking for was, what was our plan? What was the timeline for development, the two-year development and implementation? How do we go about doing that? And, and, and so I'm, I'm still, I'm still not sure. When, when I read the, the first document tells me that we're adopting TAP as the model for compensation for, for, and...
No, sir, it's not our intent, it's not our intent.
Okay, I, I, I kind of, the, the TAP grant was basically what we're adopting.
No, sir.
Okay.
The TAP model is, in its second year, so the timeline is exactly as you said, that grant will be up in three years, about the time of the implementation of your motion. So the first one, Jackie's background information, is not suggesting that this board make a decision today about TAP model, but rather, her recommendation is that, and that's why I said these are parallel tracks, we would suggest that we put our name in the pot with the South Carolina State Department of Education as they apply, and at the same time, that you allow us to commission an evaluation and bring it to you in the late fall to look at, what are all the, what do people go around the country? We need to look at best models of the place.
Right. What's the difference in South Carolina TAP and what we have in place now?
The application that you're looking at is based on the foundation of TAP, and it goes beyond that to say, not the same level of compensation as TAP, but the next level of it is like TAP, the second level. Second level being called Human Capital Management System. It's based on the principles of TAP, but it doesn't have the same level of payout, because that's not scalable.
Okay. And, and again, I thought the intent of, of our motion was to not just look at teachers, because I remember specifically Mr. Campbell saying, you know, we should look at all employees, some way of, of doing. So that, that, that's what, that's why I was looking, that's why I was looking at, how, how do we go about putting the plan, developing the plan to accomplish that? I guess that's what I was looking at.
But I was...
Okay, I've, I've got, I've got hands, I've got Mr. Campbell, Mr. Evans, Mr. Wilson, Mr. Evans, Mr. Wilson, and Bush.
At the time when you were discussing this, it's something in the past...
Please use your mic.
In the past, I was, I was talking more about merit pay instead of about pay-for-performance. And, and from what I've seen here, Charleston and Greenville are doing, they're doing pay-for-performance, not merit pay. So I think we need to make that clear, whether we want to go with pay-for-performance or merit pay. So that's all.
All right, I have Mr. Evans, and then Mr. Wilson, then Mr. Rivers.
My first question is...
And Ms. Bush, outside, Ms. Bush comes before, after Mr. Evans. I'm sorry.
My first question is, can we get a definition on the difference between the two?
Yeah.
Seriously?
Yeah.
I mean, that, that element to the conversation between merit pay and pay-for-performance.
Right.
Then I have some other questions, but go ahead.
Just as for operational conversation, this isn't an industry definition by any manner means. Pay-for-performance, I see as being based on student achievement. I see merit pay encompassing possibly student achievement, teacher behaviors, outside-the-classroom contributions, whole-school performance, et cetera. It's bigger than just pay-for-performance. The TAP folks do not use the term pay-for-performance. But some schools, some places in this country use strictly pay-for-performance. Your kids' test scores go up, you, you receive more compensation, and just, we, we need to study where it's being done and what are the implications of it.
But is it in fact pay-for-performance or merit? TAP? What, what is TAP considered? Merit or?
TAP is more comprehensive, has lots more in it besides student achievement. It's only a piece of it. I would consider it merit.
Yeah, okay. I think that's what you're looking for.
Okay, so...
It depends also on your evaluation of that.
Okay. I know we're going to discuss this at length, I've just got a myriad of questions, because I've, I've worked in things that are quasi to this, and, and saw some things that worked and some things that didn't work. First of all, Dr. Truistell said that we've got two items here, they're parallel, but they're not the same. And it sounds like one of the things we need to do is decide whether we want to apply, be part of this grant, so that if we go forward with merit pay or pay-for-performance, we're in the, we're in the pool, okay? So I'm happy to make a motion about that if, when it becomes appropriate. My second point is, is with TAP, and I agree with Mr. Campbell, I don't think we can do this, just like we've talked about cost of living adjustments and that kind of thing. I, I do not think that it's fair to only set this up for one group of employees. I don't think that's what's being discussed. I just think we need to make sure as we go forward, we have a broad program that's going to cover all the different groups of employees, and give all of them an opportunity to either work on their pay-for-performance or merit pay, whatever we end up calling it, kind of thing. With the TAP, one of the things I'd like to know, not today, obviously, but as we go forward, is to get some data about, I know that it's made up of actual performance of the students, and then another piece that qualifies teachers is their evaluations done by mentor teachers and master teachers and the administrators in their business, in their, in their building. What percentage those two parts play in the incentive stipends that they get? Like, I mean, is, is the performance of students 80%, and, and the evaluations by administrators and master teachers 20%? Is it something different? And lastly, and this might be the most delicate and sensitive, is what are we, are we seeing any separation at different buildings? That is, do we see one building where a lot of people are outs, outside of the student performance, okay? Getting much higher ratings from the master teachers and the administrators than what's going on at other buildings, okay? And I only reference this, back in the mid-'90s, we had a superintendent who set up some merit pay things, okay? And I know that some of us were concerned, because we were getting just pelted by some of our employees, or the people we supervised, that some of us felt like we were being very stringent and very dedicated to making really strong evaluations of people, and then we'd look and see a school where everybody qualified, and of course, people at our building were saying, "Hey, what's the deal?" You know? Because I work here with you, you know, you're making it difficult for me to qualify, but if I work next door, you know, everybody's getting it over there. So I know it's a sensitive area, but I think it's an important thing to make sure that as much as we can, with the human element involved, that the decisions, that the ratings are objective.
Again, I thought essentially that's the direction we're going, and something uniform district-wide, that applied to as many people as possible. Now, I, I see subgroups. There is a subgroup of teachers, that yes, they may have some different criteria and different things, but there may also be something of administrators at the, at the building level. There may also be something, support staff at, at a level. But what do we have to address compensation? I, I guess I'm, I thought we, I, I thought our goal was to try to put in a compensation program that was performance-based, that, that would say that if you don't at least meet a minimum level of performance, then guess what? We, we shouldn't, we shouldn't be paying you.
Well, I, I, I agree with you. I mean, I, I think that in a very simplistic form, what you see is, somebody that you have concerns about gets told, hey, their, their salary's being frozen at this level until they get better. Somebody who does what they're supposed to do at a, kind of a standard level, gets a cost of living increase, and then you have that body of employees that are going way beyond, and they become subject to some of these things that we're talking about right now.
Maybe my expectation was super. I have Ms. Bush, Mr. Wilson, Mr. Rivers, Mr. Campbell.
My question is relating to the...
And I remind everyone, please use your mics.
My question... My question relates to the 15 TAP schools and the dollars that were paid out. We know what school, but do we know how, are we, how do we get the information in terms of the, the improvement in student performance of these 15 schools, based on them being a TAP school? I'd be interested in seeing that.
And I would suggest, Mrs. Bush, is that you all need a good hour plus orientation to TAP with all those kinds of things.
Okay.
I agree.
Yeah. Yeah, can I, I'd like to see with, with that amount of dollars being spent, what kind of student improvement? The other thing, I'm, I'm with Mr. Evans in terms of moving forward with the Race to the Top grant, in terms of us being a part of it. I have no major objections to that. But I'm confused as to the similarities between the TAP grant and the Teacher Incentive Fund four grant, in terms of what they require. So if we, if we're successful in getting the, if, if we apply along with the state for the Race to the Top grants, and we're successful...
How would that merge?
How would that merge? And we have 15 schools in TAP already. Is it the remaining schools, or do we, is it the countywide? What are your plans if we...
If you look at the bottom of the first page of the TIP Fund, Teacher Incentive Fund four grant page at the bottom.
Okay.
The LEA, that's us, Beaufort County Schools District, we're reading this. Initially, implement these elements into selected schools. The word selected means no non-TAP schools for us.
Oh.
Okay.
So it'd be non-TAP, okay.
Yes.
It'd be remaining, okay.
Or, here, here's the caveat, look above, Mrs. Bell, high-poverty, high-needs. Above 50% poverty is the minimum. That, that equates with us, I, the list is on my chair, I think it's seven schools. It's not all 15. Hilton heads do qualify. But what we would choose to do as a board, I hope, is to be the same, to use the TAP rubric in all schools. We can do that now. We can use the TAP rubric in all schools if we choose. We would like to suggest, if the board would want us to, is to pilot using the TAP rubric in lieu of a debt, or continually contract teachers in schools that wish to pilot this year. Because many schools have said, my gosh, there's a TAP app or the iPad, there's all this material and support from TAP. We're giving it to 15 schools, we'll use it in ours. We could not use it for inductees, nor for teachers who are in their second year, who are in what we call safety evaluation, because those folks are in their years of, they haven't gotten tenure yet. But if you're an experienced 15-year teacher, and you would like to choose this in lieu of a debt, a goals-based evaluation, we would suggest that we go ahead and pilot it this year, because we can do that right now, if the state board is nation's blessing, and they're actually encouraging folks to look at it. We would also, Mrs. Bell, commit to hiring effective candidates to participate in this, all sections of this, the master teacher, if we would have high-quality people, if we would use the Human Capital Management System, no later than year three, so that's 2015 at least, if they were to decide today. I don't know if they'll decide this by December or not.
That's my next question. When will, when will the grant be decided?
As I understand it, this application goes in tomorrow, so Mr. Evans' explosion is timely. With Dr. Zay, he, he requires our signatures to move forward, and then if it were funded, that we would know somewhere this late fall.
And so I want to bring back up something that several of you said, but may not have picked up on. You currently do not have a policy in place that allows us to freeze the salary of any employee on an improvement plan.
That's true.
I personally think you should, but we don't at the current moment.
Okay, and, and to me, that's a part of why I wanted to see the comprehensive compensation plan. Let's have all those things that we need to address relative to compensation. Let's put those out there, and let's see as a body, how we're going to proceed. What policy do we want to have? Policy do we want to have in place that will impact compensation?
What I put on the board was, our recommendation would be that you all commission a study to do all of those things, and to study best practices in the nation and see what you think. You may decide after studying this concept that you don't want to do anything, do, do any of this. You may want to decide to participate in the TIP grant, you may want to consider freezing salaries of employees on improvement plans. Or you may not.
Here's...
When I say improvement plan, Mr. Washington, I should clarify to say they have a needs improvement as their rating. Yes.
I have Mr. Wilson, Mr. Rivers, Mr. Campbell, then I, I want to suggest something to us. Have you finished, Ms. Bush? I'm sorry, I don't, I don't want to over...
No, you're good.
Okay, all right. I have Mr. Wilson, Mr. Rivers, Mr. Campbell.
Well, as I saw it, we needed two motions, and now I think we need three motions today. I was going to make the first motion. I believe we should commission a study for pay-for-performance slash merit programs for all employee levels. That's a motion.
Okay.
We don't know enough, we keep wanting to ask you questions, we, we need the study. Let's go.
All right, now, all right, there's a motion by Mr. Wilson, a second by Mr. Campbell, I believe, did I hear? To commission a pay-for-performance slash merit pay study for all employees. Is that, is that your motion?
Yes.
All right. Discussion. All right. You want to have, to make up the motion, I always get the first crack.
I, I think there's a lot of confusion. We don't know where we're going to go. There's a lot of programs out there, we shouldn't be starting from scratch, and let's see some of the best programs out there, and have people come back to us and look at the performance, look at the merit, and at various levels, and then make some decisions on how we want to move in the future.
Okay.
And that study would include, okay, possible necessary changes in state legislation, because I'm not one to... I'm not one to say you have all these steps, et cetera, if you want to put more money into merit, so that would be part of that study.
Would you commission a study like this, Dr. Truesdale? Is that not in-house here? See, there's where my problem comes in, because, so we're going to hire some consulting group for thousands of dollars. I mean, we've got to have some kind of cap on what we're willing to do.
They do that.
Mrs. Bell, you remember that you all got two studies last year?
Yeah.
And you evaluated structural programs, PG 1.5, and in January of that, of every year, you select categories. So two years ago, you selected student achievement gap and minority, achievement gap and special A. Those were the two you did. And IB, we did IB shortening. But the full ones were of achievement gap, minority student achievement, and special A. What we're suggesting is this year's will be that one. The funds are allocated in our budget to do two evaluations a year. We're suggesting this year, because of the reduction in staff at the district office, we do one evaluation, and it'd just be it. It'd just be your, your one, it's the board's evaluation. So, the answer to the question was, we're not just going to open this up to spend thousands of dollars on some study group like...
Fire practice.
You actually won't spend thousands of dollars on a study group.
But it's already been, yes ma'am, it's already been planned.
It's in your plan.
So there is a beginning and an ending financial...
Right. Let, let me address, one of my concern, and I want to address the motion, and specifically the study, this commission. My concern would involve the scope of the study, or the, I guess you call it the RFP, and what's, what you're looking for, the definition of what we're looking for. I'm hoping, is it possible to have a study such as this, that would also get input, that we write it in such a way, that we seek input from various levels of our staff, to, to, to help develop that?
They've helped in all our studies, I believe.
No, 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 here, here's, here's, here's what I'm saying, because your motion is to look at merit pay and perform, performance slash merit pay for all employees. And, and what I'm hoping, the design of the study is, let's make sure that we get teacher input, let's make sure we get all the different categories of employees that we are writing about or we're studying. I, I just think that that design, and, and also puts some folks that we know that might dissent from, from doing such a thing. To me, it's just healthy to have that kind of, to be inclusive in the study. And I just, because I'm for this, I'm going to vote in support of this, it's just that I want to make sure that we are as comprehensive as we can be, within the limits that we have to work with.
The addition to the recommendation, would that cover what you just said?
Oh, I didn't see. My back, my back is turned because they told me to use the mic.
Yes.
Again, Mr. Campbell, there is a motion on the floor, made by Mr. Wilson, to commission a study to look at performance and merit-based pay for all employees. Okay, that's, that's, that's where we are.
Sounds good to me.
Now, any, any further discussion? Mr. Rivers?
My question or concern goes back to what Dr. Truesdale was saying earlier. Oh, I see. The, the amount of, the grant was for $30,000 that we, in reference to the TIF, was, I'm trying to remember.
The state's amount is $30 million.
Thirty million.
Yes, sir.
Okay, River, can I ask a minute? Take, hold on, because this, this is a separate motion on the floor right now. Any additional study on the motion of Mr.?
Yes, sir, Mr. Campbell.
When we talk about merit pay or pay for performance, and my question is, who would make the determination, once the principal or whoever supervises, makes that recommendation, the evaluation is sent in to the district, would that be, would you, would you approve it, or Dr. Rush will approve it?
Do you make...
I'm not going to bullshit you.
Mr. Campbell's question is about an individual's evaluation, Mr. Wilson. Not the... On an individual's evaluation, currently what happens in TAP, I'll answer that piece, and I would answer what would happen under, under this evaluation piece. Currently under TAP.
Currently in the TAP grant, what happens is that all the four components are aggregated at the SAS Institute in Cary, North Carolina, and it's statistically done for all the TAP schools in the country. And a score is sent to the school district, and the score equates to a specific payout, because it's a state grant. So it's the same way done here, as it is in Darlington, as it is in Pickens County. Every, a teacher here who scores, so suppose Mr. Wilson makes a 3.2. Mr. Wilson's 3.2 yields him the same criteria that yours would if you were in a different county, right now. Under this plan, this study, you would make the decision how it was done, when you get the recommendations back from the consultant.
Now, my, my, my other thing is, is there are some, I don't know about in South Carolina, but I know in other states, there are some school districts that is, do have merit pay, and also pay for performance. I think that we could probably get some information of some of those districts, before we put any money into this. That's, that's, that's my, my suggestion. Now, and the reason I asked the question about who's going to approve the, once the evaluation comes from the principal or the supervisor, that, that employee, because I know, when I worked for D-Head, when I worked for D-Head, our supervisor would send our report to Columbia, and then the folks in Columbia would, would approve it or disapprove it, or they may say, well, you know, I don't feel that this employee should be getting this much, we're just going to cut it back a certain percent.
I think that'd be a part of the recommendation, it comes back from the consultant, on how do you actually do those things?
Yeah, on this part, I'm, I'm leaning towards supporting this, but still, I have a, I wouldn't say a problem, but a concern, when it comes to the master teachers, you've heard this before. How do you identify the difference between a master teacher and a competent, committed, highly effective teacher that's not, that doesn't have that designation? To me, now this may sound like a country boy, but if you're paying somebody to do a job, then why do you need to pay that person extra to do the job that it's supposed to be doing in the first place? Now, I'm for merit pay, but when it comes to the teacher part, the master teacher, if you're a master teacher, you're going, you're going to be doing that irregardless of the financial benefits that you can receive. And if you're doing it just for the financial benefits, then that says that you're not totally committed to kids. So, I, I see a disconnect. I understand the, the logic and the motive, but if you're a good teacher, you should be doing that irregardless of the financial incentives, because you are getting paid every two weeks anyway.
Couple of quick things to, to help clarify perhaps, Mr. Rivers. The only reason we agreed to, to participate in the TAP grant was because our teachers were receiving multiple years of no increase for anybody. So, the schools that were selected to participate are our highest poverty schools. They have to be Title I, they have to be high-poverty schools. We are putting extra money into the paycheck of teachers that choose to teach, and are most, are most needy children. Arguably, there are a lot of teachers who apply to work in those schools because it is an incentive. So we're hoping that that means that our teachers really want to work with struggling learners.
Batteries going. Good, you're good.
That the struggling learners, that teachers who want to work with struggling learners are doing that. The second piece to share with you is, I agree with you, the term master teacher could be seen as a descriptor, small m, for master teacher. In the TAP language, it's a position. It's not a descriptor of the teacher, it's a position. You apply for it, and anyone can apply. So any teacher in the school can apply to be a master teacher, and you are selected via a very rigorous program of evaluation by the leadership in the school, in addition with representation by leadership at the district level. All these folks have been trained. When we talked about, Mr. Evans mentioned inter-rater reliability. Inter-rater reliability is what we call, in education jargon, the degree to which your scores, Mr. Burns, match Mr. Evans's. We do a lot of tests, and we have to turn it, because this is a 30-plus million dollar grant. The state has to verify that Mr. Burns consistently scores, not only the same way, this is multiple microphones down there. Mr. Burns scores consistently each teacher in the same manner, and that his, his scoring methodology matches his peer in another school, and in another school. So it's highly scrutinized right now. What I worry about with these programs is that as we scale it from only 15 schools in, in our district, total of 30 schools in the state, as we scale this to many more schools in the nation, that inter-rater reliability may not be as strong, the training may not be as specific, the scrutiny may not be as tight as it currently is. So I think when you all commissioned this study, what's going to be very helpful is for you to look at the whole landscape. Mr. Campbell is correct, there are a lot of districts in the nation who are using this.
Yeah, let, let me point out to the board, and, and something that we've done, that addresses, I think, what Reverend Rivers just pointed out, not necessarily master teachers, but our position, I think it's our collective position, when it comes to board-certified teachers. What we have done was to scale back the compensation for just achieving the designation. And what we're trying to do is saying that we, we want to move towards not just the degree you have, but the effectiveness that you have in the classroom. If you're board-certified, but if there's a non-board-certified person that's getting better results in the classroom, why should we pay the person with the certification who's not getting results more than the person who doesn't have it, who gets the results? We are trying to move towards result-oriented pay. That's what we're moving towards. And we have taken the steps, so we're in line, we, we, we are together, and, and moving in that direction as a board. Now, correct me if I'm wrong, because this is what, in our budgets, we have taken two steps in the past, in the past three budgets, we've taken steps to reduce the stipend support. Ultimately, I'd like to see it eliminated, and put all those resources into who presents the, who gets the results. That's who we pay. We pay you for results. So I think that's the direction we're trying to go in, and if I'm wrong, correct me, but that, that kind of summarized. So where are we now? Next step, we ready to...
You have a motion and a second.
We have a motion on the floor.
Yeah, one last question.
Yes, sir.
Now, if, once this, we get to get the study done, and it's approved, that means that, 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 that fund will come out of, out of money.
Mr. Campbell, that's for, for your next work session, in November.
Please, Mr. Campbell, don't put all that away. All right, we have a motion, we have a motion on the floor. All in favor of the motion to commission a study, evaluation for a pay-for-performance slash merit pay for all employees, considering, please indicate by raising your hands. That's unanimous, eight to zero vote. Okay? All right, yes, sir.
I'd like to make another motion, that we freeze the salary of any employee who needs improvement as an annual evaluation rating, which yields an improvement plan. I, I, as a board member, am embarrassed that I've been on the board for five years, and that is, people get paid, and get increases, et cetera, when they're not performing, and I'd like to see that effective immediately.
Okay, we have a, motion is second by Ms. Kim. I, I have a point of discussion I'd like to have on that.
Yeah, my, my discussion would be...
Somebody got a second.
Ms. Campbell has.
I can understand the person not getting a salary increase as far as, but what about a cost of living increase? See, those, you know...
We actually don't, for this year, the General Assembly compute, in previous years, they've often used the term of cost of living adjustment, COLA. This year, if I'm not mistaken, Jim, do you happen to remember, I think the General Assembly simply called it an increase. Jackie's still out of the room on the phone. The 2% incre, the 2% was not designated as a cost of living, they just said an increase. So, so they previously, in the past, used to say a step or a COLA, and now, so it's confusing.
So if, if, if they had a step and a COLA, then they would not get the step, but they would get the COLA?
Actually, Mr. Campbell, according to our legal counsel, if the General Assembly mandates a step, which this year they gave the districts the flexibility, so you'd have that. But in previous years, they mandated a step, if they mandated a step for teachers, you would not, as I understand it from our legal counsel, be allowed to not award the step.
Although that employee is not doing what they're supposed to be doing.
That's right. That's why, that's why, that's my, that's why I'm bringing it up.
The question, the question I asked you, the question I had, was, aren't there circumstances where someone may be appealing their position, and what, during this course of time, and, and can you freeze positions when there is an appeal, or some process that they're going through?
An appeal, sir?
Right. Yes, ma'am.
We don't actually...
I'm, I'm just, I'm just asking, is there a circumstance where, that some, where someone is, is questioning their evaluation, and there is some process to go through until it's resolved? Is that...
We've not had to answer that question before, because you all don't have such policies, so I would have to research it.
All right. What, what, what I would hope, and, and here's what I'm thinking, that this may be a bit premature, and I support the concept of the motion, but I think, given a couple of questions that are asked about COLA, and this, and that, and tent, we need to get it answered, because I support the idea of not, but let's make sure we have certain things, yes, let's make sure we have certain things answered, before we prematurely do this. And my, I had Mr. Evans first, and then I had Mr. Wilson, and Ms. Bush after Mr. Evans, and then Mr. Wilson.
I'm just in agreement with the comments made. You know, I spent a long time in this profession, and from day one, one of the criticisms that I always heard was, well, all you got to do is live another year, and you're going to get a salary increase, doesn't matter what you do. And, and I, I think, I, I think honestly, in the light, in the, in the eyes of much of the public, that, that is a, in their minds, a valid criticism, and that we need to address that. So, if the law doesn't allow us to do it right now, then I think part of this needs to be, well, how do we pursue making a change? Or what can we do legally to say, well, in this district, this is how we're going to deal with this?
Exactly. I, I just want to make sure we cross our Ts and dot our Is. Ms. Bush and Mr. Wilson.
Can this be something that's part of our study?
Yes, ma'am.
She just put, she just put it in.
Because I'm, it's not that I'm against the motion, but I have a question on the step increase.
Yeah.
Did you automatically get...
Let's get an answer before we, I would suggest withdrawal. I can't, can't tell you what to do.
Okay, am I turn to talk?
Yes, sir.
I will not withdraw, because I am a strong believer that people do not get increases when they're not performing. If it's against state law, that a certain COLA thing, or a certain cost of, cost of living thing, or a certain step increase has to be given, then we can't break state law, even though we have this policy. But we, during this period of time, then, will work as rapidly as we can to change the state law, because that, to me, is an important tool. I agree with Mr. Evans, you live one year longer, you get more money, and that's not the way it should be. Nonperformers should not receive any additional benefits until they're performing. And that's what's going in every business, and I feel strong about that, and I'd like to see it voted in, but I, again, the administration cannot break state law, so we know that we have a goal in there, and this is what we're trying to do, and we can still study that. We don't have to wait till next year to get a study committee report four or five months down the line. We can get some clarification from the state right now, and implement it if legally allowed to, and if not, let's start working with state law, so we can implement it later.
I, I will, I support the concept of the motion, but I will not vote in favor of it until we get the clarification. This is something that we can vote on in August, at our next regular meeting, when we get that clarification. I don't want to wait until the study, I concur with you, we don't have to wait that long, but I do believe that we need to get certain...
I will table the motion in August.
Thank you.
I can't ask some more questions.
It's, it's, it's a table motion, okay? And, and we can move forward with August.
I will table it after, Mr. Campbell. I will table it after, Mr. Campbell. I will table it after Mr. Campbell.
Okay, folks, we're not quite going towards, according to Robert's rules, but, okay, we're making some, we're developing our own rules as we go forward today, okay? Go ahead, Mr. Campbell.
My, my question was, is that, oh, evaluation. I think, once we get the study done, we have to make sure that, when we're talking about merit pay and performance pay, we have to make sure that every employee is evaluated every year. I don't know how that going to job with the state, but.
By law, we should.
Yeah, we should.
Yes, yes, it's a requirement. Yeah, okay. All right, now, with that, we're tabled, we're now ready to, is there any other actions to be taking regarding this? I think there's one to apply for the state, for the state, I don't think we've had that motion yet.
Yeah, okay, I'd like to make a motion, we participate in the State Department, TIF four grant application.
We have a motion to participate in the State TIF four grant, motion by Mr. Wilson, second by Mr. Evans. Any further discussion? Thank you for none. All in favor of the motion, please indicate by raising your hands. That's unanimous, thank you very much. All right, next topic. Next topic, here's what we're going to do. We're going to let you get your lunch if you're necessary, but as soon as you indulge for about 10 minutes, we're going to start the discussion with our principals on grading floor, grade floor.
That's good.
Okay? With that, we take a short break. And the superintendent is urging me to sign a document right now. Here. Are you guys on a truck ready? We're back into, from our lunch recess, we're now going to address grade flooring and grading practices. Stand corrected. And we have Dr. Rhodes, who is going to lead off, be the lead presenter. Do you need lights on, or do you need to?
I'm okay.
But we want to make sure you have the mic, though. We're trying, let's find that mic. And we're very informal, we're finishing our lunch, we're not quite there, but we can chew and listen at the same time. That's one thing about us, we can multitask.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair and Board members.
Good afternoon.
You've had a chance to look at the grading floor paper, practices paper. If you haven't, I'll encourage you to look through that. And I'd like to just begin by answering any questions relative to, instead of me presenting various aspects, I'd rather allow you to begin the conversation at the point where you'd like to begin.
Dr. Rhodes, I'll be quite honest, I don't think that board members have had an opportunity to fully examine the document. And if you want to first go through an initial summary, then, I think we'd be in a better position to engage.
All right. Well, as the abstract says, "Purpose of the analysis to discuss grading floor, or grading practice, distinguish grading floor practice from administrative grade changes, and to examine the South Carolina uniform grading policy." The UGP does stipulate for the conversion of failing grades, and a discussion regarding that conversion is presented in the paper. To begin, primarily, what grading practices are. Some research is presented in the, in the front page, probably a good chart to draw your attention to a table. The first table there is from a research and author, Guske, one of the foremost authorities on assessment and grading practices for educators. And as you take a look at that, they're basically, we know that in math, we can find the mean, median, or mode to gain a central tendency. Oftentimes, grades are determined by the mean, we add and divide. Guske also presents in Marzano, a logic rule. Logic rule is basically trend data. For example, you teach, you assess, you teach, you assess, you teach, you assess, formative, summative feedback, so that if the teacher's with the children for several weeks, we would expect an increased understanding of the content standards and what the children are able to do. So, a direct relationship between time with teacher and student understanding. The more time I have with the teacher, the more I understand. So that if I gave an assessment in August and the child scored an average, however we communicate and articulate average, whether that's through meets expectations, or whether it's to 70%, or whether it's through a C letter grade, or a two on a four-point scale, how will we determine our communication mechanism? That in August, we see that grade of average, and that after several more weeks of instruction, I give another assessment or test, and the child is above average, or is scoring at a B or an A. So the question then says, well, which is indicative of the student's understanding? The initial score of a C, or the present score of an A? So that conversation's ongoing with the educators. How do I determine the best measure of mastery? How do I communicate this child has done everything? Furthermore, a lot of research and discussions happening, and the first quote, or I guess excerpt, from the school that you have that's italicized a couple pages in, is from an elementary school. And as that quote really speaks to the separation of things like participation. Well, how do I judge participation? The child who's quiet, doesn't raise their hand, but is very sharp and intelligent, are they participating? A shy child, are they participating? So the use of rubrics, how does the teacher assess on an ongoing basis what the children understand? So, taking all those things into consideration, now I need to report out a score. And what often is done is on a 100-point scale. Reeves, one of the foreknown authors, researchers, he has an excerpt that we use in there, talking about, you know, the range, the interval, 10 points, 90 to 100. So it basically comes down to the weight of zero. So, 0 to 70, on a 100-point scale, 0 to 70 is pass, is fail, sorry, 0 to 70. So 70 points of failure. Mathematically, if we only use the mean average, passing, or an A, let's just use an A, 93 to 100, that's seven points of an A, and 70 points of failing. So one of the videos that's on YouTube, that if you go and Google these kinds of things, you get Rick Warmeli. And Rick Warmeli is one of the foremost people on differentiation and grading and assessment in differentiated classroom, one of the references you have. So Rick does an interesting piece on communicating, again, point is to communicate that understanding. So Rick says, you know, a 32, you're a really, 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 really big failure. A 40, you're, you're a pretty big failure. You know, a 60, you're, you're kind of a failure. So how many different degrees of failure do we report out? So, the chart that I started off with, the summary in the paper, you can see that the average score, take a look at student number seven, 100, unit one, 99, unit two, 98, unit three, a 98, unit four, and then child, something happens, zero. So if I mean average those together, I get a 79, I get a C. If I take the median, and again, the median is line up lowest to highest and pick the one in the middle, mode is which interval occurs the most, I get an A and an A. So again, there's no rule, there's no rule, there's no law that says, teachers can only determine grades by mean averages. There's no law that says a teacher cannot determine a grade by median. It's an acceptable statistical measure of central, central tendency. So that's one concept. That method there is, he cites teachers, often will say, I'm going to drop the lowest score. You know, I'm going to give you multiple assessments, think about the first week or two weeks of school, if you're a parent, you've received a progress report, you go on, there's only one or two things in the teacher grade book. So those one or two things account for a lot of weight. If I don't do well on one of them, you know, if, if you only have two possible points and you get one out of two, you're at 50%. So the more, the dividend goes up, our divisor dividend relationship, the more opportunities that I have to demonstrate my understanding, in general, the better that I'm going to do. So, for example, most schools, and as principal, I would say that we had a general rule, one item each week graded as a minimum. So over nine weeks, we would see a minimum of nine things in the grade book. So then, what are those things back to? Are they back to participation? Do they align back to quizzes? Do they align back to tests? Are they aligned to homework? Are they aligned to participation? What am I assessing? So you have kind of two categories. You have the academic and the non-academic. So again, the quote that's in, in the paper, the first, from the first school, kind of highlights that well. So, that first page, I mean, I think I've kind of given you a little bit of an overview of things to think about. The second piece in the uniform grading policy is relative to the 100-point scale and, and the relation of that. Grading floors or setting a minimum grade, use of zero. A child who gets a 60 is still failing. So, grade floors are not an administrative grade change to say, you failed, but I'm going to pass you, or you got a 75 and, you know, honor roll is really an 82, so I'm going to move you to an 82. That's not, so, this at all. So that's one distinguishing characteristic. And then you have some examples, EOC, quarter one, so just as a quick overview, as you probably know, so each of the two first quarters are averaged together to get the semester, third and fourth quarter averaged together to get the second semester, and the semester one and semester two grade would be averaged together to get a final. So a sixth-grade student, or a fifth-grade student, a third-grade student, three third graders, is when we first put in the percentage grades in South Carolina, they would just have a 50/50 average between the two semesters. In an EOC course, like Algebra One, the semester and semester each count .4 or 40%. So I would do .4 times whatever my percentage of my semester one, .4 times the percentage of semester two, and then .2 times the EOC, add those together, and I'm going to get a final yearly grade. So, an example of a child quarter two, life happens to this child, maybe, maybe a family member dies, maybe they move, maybe they have to change homes, who, something happens to this student in the example, and quarter two, they would have a 36. Well, in this example, the 36 is moved to a 60, that's the grade floor. The 60 still says, you failed quarter two. You failed. You did not pass quarter two. But what the 60 does do is it gives the child opportunity to pass. Notice that, all things considered equal, if the child, again, average, or below average student, 73, scores a 73, a lot of times, I get a 73, you know, in the quarter, and I don't always pull that 73 out on the big, heavy EOC test. So what if my EOC performance dropped? And you can run a variety of scenarios, but basically what the schools have done, and what teachers have done over time, is to say, you know, the 60 allows us to mathematically still have hope for passing, whereas if I report out that 36, my final's a 66, that child failed the course. What's the child's understanding relative to time and point assessment? Time and point assessment's important, children can have a bad day. All right? So it's a time and point issue. So that's really, the intent of the papers, to kind of provide that, that overview and hope that's helpful. Dr. Truska?
Yeah.
One of the things to emphasize to the board is that, you've heard us say this many, many times, both me, Dr. Arford, and our principals, grades are the purview of the teacher. At no time is it appropriate for somebody external to the classroom to come in and change a grade. You have to have, the teacher has to have purview over her grades, his grades. And the principals that collaborated on this white paper are here, along with Carol Ingram, who's not here, but she's here in spirit and in heart. She called this morning to make sure that you all knew, she's visiting with family this week. I told her not to fly back, just for today, but that these gentlemen, these folks will do a really good job of presenting. And this has been shared with every principal, and every principal has endorsed this white paper, but the writing team is a small writing group.
I have Ms. Bell and, and Mr. Evans, but let me, and Ms. Bush, but let me tell you what I'm going to be asking at the end. What is the recommended policy by the administration? Then, then we'll get into this discussion. But go ahead, I have Ms. Bell, Mr. Evans, Ms. Bush.
I'm, I'm pretty sure that we all know why this came up recently. The only, I understand this, and I think that this is a great job that you did here. My only problem with this is still the same problem I have. If you don't do this at every school, it's not a uniform grading policy. It's a, I'm going to choose to do it at the middle school, but I'm not going to do it at the high school here, and then this high school does it, and this elementary school does it. If you don't do it exactly the same in all of the schools, then it is not a uniform grading policy. It's a, I decided that my school's doing it.
And that we follow the uniform grade policy, it's a practice, and I would say that, I believe I understand the intent of, of the concern, and I, and I respect it very much. And I, I do would say, as principals, we've had multiple conversations, should that be across the board? And ultimately, it comes back to capacity building of the teacher, what exactly are they assessing? I came from a situation with standards-based. Amount of homework. We are not in a position to be able to stipulate and say, homework should only be 5%. Homework, there are considerable authors that would say, don't do homework at all. There's another author that would say, here's the value of homework when it's meaningful and what you do. So homework is only one aspect of the teaching-learning process, so it's difficult to establish a policy that dictates outside of the UGP in South Carolina. The UGP stipulates specifically, since when grades should be converted to a 61. Beyond that, there's no established policy in the state to say, if a child misses so many homework assignments, it's this, if they, those are still under the purview of the teacher as a professional educator, to decide and work with and differentiate for that child. I guess that's my, you know, initial response, and I think Dr. Truska would.
Let me make sure, Ms. Bell, that you all know what UGP, the Uniform Gradescale Policy is. It is a state board of education regulation. It is not referred to a teacher's individual classroom grades. It refers to how does a school, as an entity, set intervals, and how does a board of education? So, an A range, 93 to 100, is the same everywhere.
I understand that. I'm still, my, still, my issue is Hilton Head Island High School does not practice this.
That's right.
Bluffton High School does practice this.
They, it's my understanding that they do not.
Their math department.
Oh, their math department does.
Okay. My children are in high school, and my son, who is an exceptional student, was not really an exceptional student, because at some point during his four years, he got a C. Had he not received that C, and had it been just bumped up because of whatever floor that teacher came up to.
No.
It would, if you did, look at this. All right, for example, if you were doing this method and dropping the lowest score, my point is, not to be specific with my children, the point is, every kid at the Hilton Head High Island High School is not being compared apples to apples to the other high schools that are practicing this. Does that make sense to you?
Right. And I guess the caveat.
I mean, do I care that my kid made a C? No. But.
The caveat is, and I think the chart you pointed to is a good example. If we start stipulating what you're indicating, you're almost into a point of stipulating you have to use the median, or you have to drop lowest score, or you shouldn't include so much for homework, we really can't not dictate. These are professional conversations at the building level. Now, as a district, should we do more professional development on assessment and grading? Absolutely, I would say we should, because I think part of that is a conversation with Hilton Head High and Bluffton High. Bluffton High's math department versus science department, they've got to have conversations, and why does it make sense for that department or that grade level? Some of the elementary schools, a certain team or grade level of teachers would say, sometimes it's, we see a dip in, in kids as they move into the middle school, and it's a buffer, like the ninth-grade academy is referenced. So, I understand, I really do, the intent of what you're talking about, and I'm going to ask Mr. Shirley to, to speak to that, maybe, you raised your hand there, Jim.
You're going to have to come up, I hate to say.
And that's a classic example, ninth-grade academy.
Ms. Bell, in response to your question, what you were asking about specifically, an 84 at one school is the same 84 at all other schools. The actual question is, is there a difference in a 60 at that school and a 43? And looking at the uniform grading scale, the GPA weights for a 60 and a 43 are one in the same, they are zero. On the uniform grading scale, if you look at the uniform grading scale, everything from 0 to 61 is a zero point for GPA weighting.
Right.
Okay? And so therefore, whether it's a 60 or, you know, a 1 for that vantage point, it actually has the same GPA weighting, which is much different at the high school level than it is at the other levels. So, your question really is talking about all those grades below a 61, and they're all equated in the uniform grading scale as a 0.0 in their GPA rating. So they do carry the same weight, there is no difference in those.
Well, a prime, prime example, again, ninth-grade academy, you kids come over to the high school, and right off the bat, they blow a math test and they make a 35.
Okay.
Then they get themselves together and they Then they get themselves together, and they make 90, 90, 90, 90, 90. Now, at one school, they're going to raise that 35 to a 60, so he's got a better chance at the end, and at the other school, it doesn't get raised.
No, that's not what currently is in practice.
That is not in practice.
No, that's not in practice. The, on a large scale, school by school, that we understand. What you just described is a given test, comes in, does poorly on a test, if I heard you correctly. So, Guski's example is a unit, and we could say maybe the first three units are in the first nine weeks. So, it really, it goes back to almost mapping out your assessments from an understanding point on the, you know, kind of a Covey, and that was an unfortunate loss by Dr. Covey passing, but anyway, sorry. The, begin with the end in mind, backwards design, so if I say, I know I'm going to give these three quarterly cumulative tests, and then I need to back in what are my smaller unit assessments and things like that. I think that's the ongoing professional development of what you're talking about. What do we do with this child who just scored a 35? But I don't know of any educational institution that would be able to blanket that with a policy to say, every teacher must do X when the child gets a 35. Those have to remain the purview of the professional educator and school-based conversations. That is our recommendation as an administration.
All I'm saying is, if it's not done exactly the same at every one of our schools, it shouldn't be done at all. It needs to be the same or not at all. Or you bring us reports about, you know, Whale Branch is doing this, and Hilton Head Island is doing this, but you're not really comparing them the same, because there's different practices happening. That's all I'm saying. I want to monopolize the conversation. I'm just expressing a concern that if it's not the same for every 10th grader, and every fifth grader, and every, you know, every kid in the district, that it shouldn't be happening. It can't, you know, you approve it at one school, and then Amanda doesn't approve it at another school. It's just, it's not, I don't think that's a good practice.
All right. I have Mr. Evans, and Ms. Bush, and Mr. Wilson, and I'd like to get into it. Mr. Evans?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm probably going to be late to hear. I served on the, I served on the Uniform Grading Policy for the state when it was formulated in 99, 2000. Okay? I can tell you that specifically, grade fours went out of the conversation. They came up as a topic, they were never addressed. It was said that 60 would be the lowest, you'd get no grade points for that. The Uniform Grading Policy was put in place because of the Palmetto Scholarships, okay? Because you had school districts in the state that had 93 as the bottom of an A, and others that had 90, and so you couldn't make an equal determination about who qualified for the Palmetto Scholarships. And that's why the legislature charged the State Department with coming up with a Uniform Grading Policy, and we spent six months, seven months, doing that. And I, and again, grade four came up and was dismissed. It was just said, 60's the bottom, nobody discussed what happened below 60. Okay? And I think the presumption was schools could do what they wanted to. In 2002, 2003, and maybe some of the board members remember this, we implemented a pilot program at the high schools in the district. Okay? I know, because I was the lead person, and after I got fitted for my bulletproof vest, you know, I went out to the schools, and we started talking about this. Okay? It was a very contentious thing. I thought that we had written the pilot very well to take care of circumstances, people just didn't want to look at some of the circumstances. The fear was some student would do really well the first semester, okay, and then have it in their head that they couldn't get worse than a 60 the second semester, so they just tanked the second semester. Okay? We put in a provision that they couldn't do that. If a teacher saw that, they could come back to the principal and say, look, I want to give this student their real grade. Okay? Because I think they're tanking. Now, there was a process, you had to talk with the student and their parent and that kind of stuff.
And that's a process that...
At the end, I want to say that we analyzed about 38,000 high school grades, and I think we found less than 25 cases where it appeared that the student had done really well the first semester, and then just said, good, I'm home free, I don't have to do anything the second semester. My last point is this. It's the purview of teachers. And if I'm a teacher in a, in an English III class, or a freshman English class, let's use that, and I've got four kids who came in and just made a disaster out of the first semester, and I know they're going to be with me second semester, I've got to give them some incentive to do well. If I sit down with those four kids and say, tough luck, you got a 40 the first semester, you can't pass for the year, and then I'm going to sit there and expect them to turn in work every day and be well-behaved, and all the other things that go on when they're sitting there going, why? What's the incentive? So, as long as it's teacher purview, which it is, and I believe always will be, then we're going to have instances where teachers say, I've got to give this student an incentive of some kind, or deal with them. Now, going back to Mrs. Bell's point, the problem is, you know, I've been in situations, I'm sure you have and the other principals have, where sometimes it depends on what teacher you get. You know, you got two teachers teaching Algebra I, one says, you get what you get, and the other one says, okay, here, I'm going to work with you. Now, it's a matter of, well, shoot, I want to change classes. You know, I want to get over with, or schools, or something else. I mean, just think of, if we take Mrs. Bell's point to the extreme, okay? I'm in English I at Hilton Head High School, I get a 45 the first semester, and I go, can't pass for the year, I'm transferring to Bluffton, you know, to see if I can get into the program out there where they're going to say, oh, it's only a 60, I'll use math, because I know it's only in that department. It's only a 60, so now I'm at Bluffton, I got a chance to pass for the year. At Hilton Head, I have no chance. So, I think she has a valid point about some consistency, because then you're going to start getting, you know, you've worked, you've worked in schools where students make class choices and that kind of thing, and I know we all get deluged with, well, shoot, I know how Mrs. Bell grades, and I know how Mrs. Bush grades, and I want Mrs. Bush. You know, I don't want to be in Mrs. Bell's class, kind of thing. And so, that's where the real, on the practical basis, that's where the rub is. Okay?
Let me share with the board a couple of examples. Classroom, the grades are the purview of the teacher for a very important reason. I visited yesterday morning with one of our arguably best creative writing teachers in our district, and one of the things that we were talking about was assessment in the classroom. And what Mrs. Sturgis was sharing is that in her class, in her creative writing class, she wants the kids to do a good job, and then she allows them, she gives them feedback, and then they do do-overs. And many of her colleagues go, you let them rewrite? Wow, I never would do that. That's an example. Some teachers give quick quizzes and count it X amount. Another teacher gives another quiz and counts it a bigger amount. My advice to you all, and that's what you asked us to do, is to write this white paper, is the last sentence, is to respect the professionalism of the teachers and the collegial dialogue within the school. You cannot legislate from a board level, grades in a classroom, because teachers will teach as they believe is necessary for their children's learning. So, if you were to say, everybody has to have a grade floor of whatever it is. At Priscilla's school, you all used 60 as your lowest grade, do you not? 62, 62. So, they used 62. They decided as their community that they would use 62. They were dealing with, you tell me if I say this right, with a group of students who had not experienced academic success in their past, a vast majority of their beginning students. So, to establish a 62 as a minimum in that particular school still fails. If a kid's doing a 62, it's failing. But he's only failing by eight points, as opposed to 40 points, so that they could then get those kids to college acceptance letters. They had to still pass, they had to jump over all the hoops, but you don't cut, so, and I've seen, I want to share this last thing with you, and then I'll sit down and hush. Some schools do what I call graduated expectations. We expect less of our sixth graders than we do our eighth graders. So, we have a tougher set of practices as professionals for our eighth graders, because we're getting them ready for our high school environment, than we do for our kids coming in in sixth grade when they're coming out of fifth grade, and they're accustomed to one teacher. It is really important, in my opinion, that you all respect the right of the teachers in the classrooms to come together, and as Derek said, to work with their principals. Different schools are at different places in terms of their understanding of classroom formative assessment. The state mandates the Uniform Grading Scale policy. That's an exterior, outside of, that's a school-level conversation, but the interior of the classroom is the purview of the teacher.
All right, madam, I've got Ms. Bush and Mr. Wilson, but for the sake of discussion, I want to propose a motion, and if I'm off-base, tell me I am, because I don't know if this makes sense, and I know it's probably not written correctly, but as a policy, my last question after I read the document was, well, what is the recommendation in terms of policy, board policy? So, here's what I'm saying. The grading practice policy of the Buford County School District is that no school or teacher will engage in grading practices that violate state policy. All developed flexibility in grading by teacher and/or schools must be approved by district administration. Period. It, what it does, on the one hand, we're saying upfront that no one can violate state law or policy regarding grading practices. Number two, any flexibility that is developed by teacher and/or schools should be known and approved by at least the district office, so we can catalog and know all those things to make sure that there is a record of what we're doing. And if there's any heartburn about it, then we have a basis on which to address it and not be witch-hunting. So, that's my recommendation. If I can get a second to that for discussion, it will lead into all these things that we're talking about. You can't read anything that I write, that's why I use the computer, but I will, there's no way Robin can read, but you go ahead. That's why I use the computer. You try. So, that's my motion, if I can get a second.
Second, Mr. Burns.
All right, we have a second by Mr. Burns. Okay? Now, we have discussion. But what, when I read this, and having a conversation with some folks, some of the things that came to mind for me is, what do we do about children who are not accustomed to success, without inflating and without giving them false hopes, but somehow give some realistic hopes to stay in the system? What can we do to do that? This grading system can do some of that, but it does take, the key is the teacher, the professionalism of the teacher, to know what it takes to motivate and not compromise certain standards. You don't want to compromise standards in terms of knowledge that a child must acquire, but how do you get those children to get to that level? Some children get there by different avenues. This is one of those tools, potentially, if used correctly by a professional, that can be used to get students moving. That, the reason I put in my motion about the district knowing about it, just to be able to check, because there may be some who are not equipped, and who may not have been, their principal leadership or someone may think that, no, this person's not in a position to do these kinds of things. And that way, you've got to check and balance to make sure it's done. And what you might find out, that by sharing this information and having it codified or having it known, that there may be some recommendations to some other folks to, you might want to look at this as an option in your environment, because at least we begin to get and chronicle those things that work. Now, again, throughout all of this, we're not compromising standards, certain basic standards that cannot be compromised in terms of knowledge. Okay? It's how do you get that? How do you get the child motivated? How do you get the student motivated to get on the right track? So, that's my discussion on it. And anyone else?
Mr. Burns?
Yes. Yes, yes. Ms. Bush, and then Mr. Kemp.
I thought I was...
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Wilson was next. You're right.
I am, Mr. Wilson.
I personally agree with Julie. I know teachers create and can really determine how they're going to do their grades in their own class. Whether you have a floor or not, that should be a school policy. I see and hear we say, many teachers have chosen individually or collectively, which means in the same school, one teacher may be using a floor and another may not. Now, I look and say, so, one kid gets a break, he passes the course, and he stays in school. The other kid, as a hard-nosed teacher, blows the first semester, says, I can't get it, loses motivation, and he's out the door. That's a big change in somebody's life, based on what one teacher, I do believe in the floor, for the standpoint that you want to keep that motivation, keep that child in school. If a teacher says, I'd be better off if he wasn't in the class anyway, I like to deal with the better students, that's an attitude, so I don't have a floor. That's her choice, but she could be destroying a kid's life, because that kid may wind up leaving school. I look and say, one of the things we've done as a board is we've established standardized dress codes, calendars, course content, discipline. We hire teachers on what they know, not who they know. We're trying to create a level playing field for every child. And just because Fred has the choice of having Mrs. Bush or I as his teacher, and one of us has a floor and one of us doesn't, then basically speaking, that could mean the difference between a kid staying in school and not staying in school. And that bothers me, that gives too much, that's not a, that's not a teacher judgment. Now, I can't, and I don't think anybody can say, when a kid takes a test, or how much work they put, emphasis of homework, or how much work they put in extracurricular...
Mr. Wilson, and board, would you indulge me a moment to just respond or interact with Mr. Wilson to try to highlight something? The point of my motion is to really try to get to what you just said. When you have differences within the same school, for instance, you talk about the student who may drop out as a result of that hard-nosed teacher. One of the things we should be cataloging is where is the source of the dropout? What, where is it that we lost the child? This is one of the things that we've said we want to do. When you start doing this, and you can trace it back to the practices of a teacher that, particularly with a certain group of kids that she may be dealing with, you have a better opportunity to bring to that teacher's attention the impact of that approach, and hopefully offer her the things that we have identified that do work. Isn't that a part of professional development? Isn't that something that we say we are engaged in? So, all I'm trying to do in a practical way, put forward a general something that, with the right development, can you be used to address the very disparity in terms of which teacher you're with to address. That's all I'm saying. There is no perfect, by the way, there is no perfect answer, but what we're trying to do is to develop ways of removing the disparities that leads to dropouts.
Okay, I can understand what Mr. Washington's saying, except that, in fairness, if every student doesn't have the same system, particularly even in the school, where classroom and everything else, one teacher has a minimum grade, another one doesn't, that is not fair in any measurement that I can see, and somebody has to convince me that there is a reason why that is fair. Believe me, I do not want to take grades away from teachers, but if there were certain rules of a floor or not a floor, I don't think, that's a policy decision, that's not a teacher's.
Well, listen to what I'm saying again.
I understand what you're saying.
It's, number one, you cannot violate state policy. Number one. Number one, first and foremost. Number two, should you engage in developing flexibilities? So, if you can't violate, number one, you're not going to do something that violates the policy, but if you develop some flexibility plan, then that needs to be documented. policy, but if you develop some flexibility plan, then that needs to be documented through the principal and the district office so we can make sure that various safeguards are there, in place. In addition, if it's working, you might want to transport that somewhere else. You might want to share it with someone else.
Are you going to allow two teachers in the same school have different policies?
Well, yeah, I'll tell you, if that's what it takes to get a child moving forward, then yes, as long as it's within certain parameters. Again, we, we always use the phrase, one shoe doesn't fit all. But guess what, folks? This is an effort by us to develop different shoes for different folks with standards.
Fred, then I don't want to go back even more back forth, but the shoe is the shoe of the kid. And we're saying the teacher has the shoe and we can't, we're going to get them different shoes.
No, 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 Mr. Wilson, the teacher is the cobbler, is the shoemaker. That, I mean, I mean, if you want to use that analogy now, and the one shoe fits all, then someone's got to fit the shoe. And what we're saying is the teacher.
You get nicer shoes than me?
Well.
For the same feet? It's the same concept.
Well, the difference to me is, they're shoeless kids. Now whether, and whether I have a Flo Shine shoe or a Buster Brown shoe, the point is, I want to make sure I'm shued first, have something on my, I mean, I, let's take the point, I mean, guys, I don't mean to be ridiculous.
Mr. Washington?
Yes, sir. I remember, Mr. Wilson, have you finished? I just, can we engage, if you don't mind, we're doing this, this is an unusual way to do it, but what we're doing, we're trying to keep it in context and we're keeping the discussion going. Go ahead, if you don't mind.
I think Mr. Washington's on a very good point there, in terms of shoes, because obviously you want everybody to get an education, so everybody can follow the shoes, you know that. But somebody have, and I'm not being joker, I'm trying to make a joke or minimize something, but let's say somebody has a peg leg.
Yeah.
And they have the shoe with a platform.
Right.
That doesn't mean that that shoe is going to be less effective or than a regular shoe, but he needs help.
Right.
He needs assistance.
He needs a special shoe.
He needs a special shoe and, and I think we have to tailor our programs to fit, you know, the needs of our students. The analogy that I like is like, it's a hospital. No matter who comes to that hospital, they have to receive the care that's needed for them in the condition that they're in. And students that come to us, it's the same thing. They're coming to be made whole and they come in different categories, but we have a responsibility to make sure that they, you know, they're well.
Right.
That's how I see it.
Okay, I'd like to make one more comment.
Okay, then, and Mr. Evans wants to, end of the discussion.
I don't disagree with you, however, when you come into the hospital, you had the same situation. Everybody's going to be treated the same way. If one kid doesn't have the floor and another kid does have the floor, that kid that doesn't have the floor may be the one to drop out and may need it more, and he's not being treated the same way as they are in the hospital.
George, my thing is this, yeah, you come into the hospital, you find out that, no, I've got to take you immediately in the surgery because I detected this and this treatment is needed. The other person comes in, no, I'm just going to give you a prescription because what your, your diagnosis is, no, you just got an upset stomach. What we're doing is that we're treating, we're giving everyone access to healthcare. But this case, we're talking about giving everyone access to education that's going to move them, okay?
Let me see if I can maybe narrow this a little bit. Grades three through eight, it is very, very unusual to have such a practice in a high school. Whale Branch is school-wide, Mrs. Drake? Lufton is?
Math only.
Lufton is math only. So you're really talking about grades three through eight, because below grade three, we don't give numerical grades anyway in South Carolina. We do a different format. So in those grades, most of the examples that you're worrying about, y'all, are high school.
Yeah.
I would submit that it is very unusual. I, Mrs. Drake, do you want to speak to the collegial conversations that you all had in your school before you made that decision?
You have to use the mic, your personality now.
A lot of what you said, you made, the point that you made, we had that conversation because a lot of our students, it helped, actually, it helped the motivation of our students. And it was, of course, the consensus of the teacher, and we don't do it on individual grades. We do it based on the semester and, well, the quarters and of course, the after semester. The fourth quarter, we do not apply a floor during the fourth quarter, because there are students who will do, just as some of you said, who will wait until that fourth quarter and say, oh gee, I need to, you know, pull my grade up. If I'm doing okay, fourth quarter's okay to kind of just loaf off just for just a moment. So we do it for the first, the lowest grade that goes on the report card. That child still sees that 30, if the child makes a 30 on a test, or if he doesn't get the homework done or at the level that the teacher wants, he still sees those grades. So it's not that the child's, everything I do is going to be a 60, everything I do, well, a 62 for us, everything I do is going to be a 62 and I know I can't make less than a 62. So the child does see that my grades are not at the level that my grades should be, although he or she knows that at that quarter, that my grade for the quarter will be the lowest on that report card. And of course, the teacher also, on the report card, indicates on the report card to the parent that the grade that is reflected on the report card does not actually reflect the actual grade in the class, so that the parent knows this grade is actually lower than what you see on the report card. That discussion was had with our teachers, and our teachers, actually, the consensus of the teachers was very supportive of the student because they saw that it really did motivate the student and offered the student some hope, because a lot of the students that came to us didn't have the hope or the aspirations because they had not done very well before coming into our school. So it did help with the motivation of our students, of course, which helped propel some of them to, of course, want to go to college and go into the military and other things that they want to do in life. So for us, it was a tool for motivation.
I had Ms. Evans, Ms. Bush. I haven't forgotten you, Mr. Wilson.
I could go again, too.
I have to admit that personally and from experience, I'm struggling with this conversation a lot, okay? First of all, and, and I know that Mrs. Drake didn't mean this, nor does anybody else mean it, but we have students who have experienced no success in all of our schools. So it's not limited to one area of the school district or, or anything else. So I, we can't address this problem and just say, well, at this school, because of some of the history of the kids at this school, we should have this. We unfortunately have those kids at all of our schools, okay? And, and so I'm not demeaning what they're doing. In fact, I would applaud what they're doing. My, my point comes back and I understand what Dr. Truesdale said about this is unusual at high schools, but it's high schools where kids walk. They might psychologically walk at fourth grade and say, well, I'm just never going to be successful. And that might be why it fits at third through eighth grade. But in ninth through 12th grade is when they actually just say, I'm gone, I can't succeed, I'm dropping out because I got this grade, there's nothing I can do. Now, I'm not talking about individual grades during the, during the course of a class. I'm talking about those grades that go on the report card at the quarter and the semester. And, you know, if we want to look at the fourth quarter, I, the pilot program that we had 10 years ago addressed that possibility of a student saying, oh, I'm home free, I don't have to do anything, okay? We addressed that. We saw that might be a problem, but I, I can remember to this day, sitting in one of our high schools, listening to a teacher tell me, well, some kids are just going to have to take my class three times before they get it. I'm like, really? You don't think that there's a problem with what you're doing in that situation? You know, that, that they can't get your class until they take it three times?
Mr. Evans?
And so my, my point is, a minute ago, I thought we were talking, I really thought we were talking about two different things. We do have kids who need to have special shoes to get help, okay? I think what we're talking about with the grade floor is saying, we're going to establish some equity across the district to make sure that at least on those quarter or semester grades, everybody's working on the same playing field instead of different playing fields, which is what we have right now. Now, you know, my feeling is, to be very honest with you, this needs to be black or white. Either we have grade floors or we don't. You can't, you can't have a situation where some of the schools have grade floors and others don't have grade floors, and some of the teachers have grade floors and some of the teachers don't have grade floors, because then it becomes a luck of the draw. What part of the district do I live in? Who was I lucky enough to get as an algebra teacher or a US history teacher? And, and that kind of thing. And that is inherently unfair and unequal.
All right, Mr. Evans, let, let me address that in, in form of, again, the motion that I put forward. I don't think anything we do is going to cause, create an overnight change in attitudes of the multitude of different professionals that we have in this, in this, in this system. What I do think we have an obligation to do is to identify, again, whether you want to call it professional development techniques or whatever you want to call it, that we have a, an ongoing problem of too many of our children dropping out, tuning out. And that sometimes, sometimes, it's the approach of the individual who is charged with making sure that those persons, the lights do come on, that don't turn the switch on for those persons. They don't necessarily have the skills to do with particular kids. Now, with some kids, they're great, but all kids are not the same. I'm, I want to go back to my shoe analogy again, forgive me, but I.
I don't want to interrupt you. I'm sorry, I am going to interrupt you. Maybe I didn't explain myself. You and I are saying the exact same thing, Mr. Washington. It may have sounded different coming from me, but it's the same thing.
No, but, but, no, no, it's not, no, I'm, what I'm pointing out that the purpose is, and what you said, that everything needs to be done right now, we have it, and I'm saying that there are instances where sometimes you have to gradually get yourself in to doing something, to bring people along. And, and one of the, one of the purposes of, of the motion was to get the administration to find out who's doing all these things and how effective they're, they are, and that we need to get those that we know that are not being successful in doing that, that try to help bring them along. If we pass something today, it takes time to change people's approaches and minds to do things. I'm a realist when it comes to that. I'm just saying, as a policymaker, I want to set the direction in which we need to go. And then I want to monitor that to make sure that we're doing it. I'm not going to do it myself, but it's, it's expressed particularly when we have research and, and all the background data that says this, these are the kinds of things you should be doing. I just want us to get to a point that we're a system that do those things that research says works. And it ain't going to happen overnight. I know ain't incorrect. I know that's, that's not correct English, okay? But my, my point is, and, and I'll stick to my, and I'm not going to talk anymore because I know what I'm going to vote for, so I'm, I'm going to leave it alone. And I have got, I cut you off, I let you finish, I've got Ms. Bell, and then we need to, and Ms., before Ms. Bush.
I'm not sure what your motion is.
I got Ms. Bush before Ms. Bell.
What is your motion? What is it?
It establishes a district-wide policy. That's one of, one of the complaints to us as a board, is that we don't address it. This is my answer to the board addressing this, okay? That's my answer. Right there. The grading practice policy of the Buick County School District is that no school or teacher will engage in grading practices that violate state policy. Number one. Number two, all developed flexibility in grading practices by teachers and/or schools must be approved by district administration.
Is that not two motions?
No, to me, you can't separate, to me, this, this brings out the policy. That's one motion right there for me.
Well, is still my turn?
Yes.
Because what you're saying is, cut and dried, the policy is that no school will engage in changing the uniform grading practices that goes from 69 to 100, whatever.
Well, we can't do it. We can't change that.
You can't change that. That's what that first line says, right?
I'm saying that we cannot violate state, whatever the state policy is. Again, even if the state policy changes.
But then you turn right around saying we're going to be flexible in what, in what each teacher does as long as they get the administration to approve it.
In listening to Mr. Evans, what I thought I heard him say, and that's part of what I got in there, was that the, the important thing was to develop that, something to 60, but when it comes to anything beyond that, they didn't care.
The state, the uniform grading policy deals with 60 and above. There was never anything that came out that deals with grades 60 and below.
Right.
That's all I'm saying.
Mr. Evans, I don't, I think we may be confusing these folks. The uniform grading scale policy does not address formative grades within a teacher's classroom.
Right.
Period.
Exactly.
It has, the uniform grading scale policy of the.
One doesn't have anything to do with the other.
Has nothing to do with the formative grades of the teacher.
I, I agree.
Is that what you meant?
Yeah, I mean.
This is two different things.
The first sentence, I don't, you know, that's an absolute, you can't do anything other than that anyhow. The second sentence is, is where I raise it, because I, I can only speak from my experience. And until you tell people that they can't issue a grade below a certain point, you've got people that are going to keep issuing those grades.
So that's not strong enough?
You know what I'm, you know what I'm saying, Fred. You know, they're going to sit down and say, I'm going to do what I want to do until somebody tells me I'm not allowed to do it any longer. And what I'm saying is. And then I might still do it.
And what I'm saying is that principals who should be monitoring those things, that those teachers don't, that's something that has to be approved, any, any of that flexibility needs to be sanctioned by a district administration. It needs to be sanctioned. If, if you want to talk about bringing some uniformity or at least some control on it, to me, that's the control. I, I, I don't know any other way to put it. I'm telling you, remember we said when we opened up, I think Dr. Truesdale started today about outside the box and, and thinking differently and, and looking different appro, but folks, I'm trying to do that.
What if you took out the words flexibility developed in and just said all grading practices?
Okay. That, that's fine. I'm being somewhat redundant. I guess the English teacher over there would say, you're being redundant anyhow because any practices that you, involves that might be flexibility or something, that's fine.
I mean, I know that.
Why would you have a grading practice? Why wouldn't everybody already be doing the same thing?
Because they don't.
I know, but I'm asking you to say that they do. I'm asking you to say that everybody does the same thing.
They can't.
Because every child is not the same.
Well, it's not just every child, Mr. Washington, it's also every teacher.
Teacher, right.
And your purpose in your grading. So a great, so let me use as an example, there's different ways that you grade different things. We could, this is just Valerie speaking. I don't believe that the school district can say to a teacher, thou shalt grade a project in this manner, or a quiz in this manner, or give more quizzes or less quizzes. You have to have a conversation with those folks because they're going to close the door and teach the children and grade the children the way that, way that they believe is right for their content.
That's right. If they assign a 50, because that's what that kid earned, but then they're going to write down a different grade in the book to boost his morale. And then what happens when they graduate from high school and they land in college, hopefully, and they're like, well, I just put in this minimal amount of work and I'm doing okay? And then they go get a job and then they just decide they want to willy-nilly do their job halfway because somebody's just going to give me what I need. I think we are just setting them up and, and I'm with you that I think what's going on out at Whale Branch is fabulous and I, but you still can't say, we're going to do this for this group of kids and we're not going to do this for another group of kids. It's this, they're, we're all trying to get to the end. We all want these kids to graduate. We all, we have disadvantage from one end of the, the district to the other. All I'm saying is, if, if you tell a student, you're going to get a, you're going to have a test on this material that we've gone over and kid A brings in a 50 and kid B brings in a 70, but you're just going to bump his up just because you can? Because you like him? I mean, it's just, you didn't earn that. And, and I think what's happening is, we're, we're telling kids that, you know, you don't have to do your homework because somebody's just going to give you a grade. You don't have to.
But if you want to clearly, more clearly state that, I don't have a pride, I don't have
Most resistant because I have my laptop and love it and I'm addicted to even being able to take notes. Simple things that kids can do with iPads in a classroom. So a student in grade seven is going to come in, we're going to show you a picture of it in just a minute, a little quick two-minute video. And he or she gets his iPad, does his science work, saves his lab report to his personal space called Edmodo in the cloud, comes back and gets it the next day. At Dr. Rhodes School, every child has an Edmodo place in the cloud, am I right? I asked Cory yesterday, so when does this cloud get full? And then explained up to me all about how it's infinite, it's virtually infinite how much space we have. The goal is for us then to go to Tech for Kids possibly the following year on one-to-one, if, if it's successful. So if Cory give you specifics of where we are right now, then we're going to play a two-minute video for you and then open it up for questions.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
So this is where we are. The hardware and initial software, our goal is to have everything completed from the technology standpoint by the start of school, August 20th. So we're talking about 11 schools. And when I talk about hardware, I'm talking about the carts, the iPads themselves, the cases that we're getting, barcoding, inventorying, all of those things that go into buying new technology and put it in our schools. From a technology services standpoint, we are support for our schools, so we want to make sure our part of it is ready for the first day of school. That is, that is our role. Each middle of school and high school will then determine their implementation plan. There are some schools that have indicated they are ready to go. Whale Branch Early College High School has been doing one-to-one for multiple years, so they are used to a scenario with one-to-one computing, it's their, part of their instructional style. So their first week of the school year will be involved the same way every first week of the school year is rolling out. It was laptops, now it's iPads, parent meetings, all those things. Hilton Head Island High School, they are doing only the ninth grade academy, so we're talking about a small number of teachers. Over, I would say 60% of those teachers have personal iPads. They are ready to go. Amanda Anan immediately emailed me yesterday and said, "We are ready, we want to go the first week of school, we will be set." We are providing training and I will go over those dates. The other schools, I'm working with the principals on what works for their schools. It needs to be sort of organic and open because it's based on professional development and teacher comfort. It's not coming from me that you're going to be going the first week of school. What we're saying is technology service will have the, the things available to you the first week of school. It is the principal and his leader or her leadership team and the teachers' decision on when they start rolling with these iPads. So then throughout August is intense training, throughout the school year, we will continue that training. These are the numbers. Again, it's the core subject areas. They will be put in designated classrooms on carts, except for Whale Branch High School because they are true one-to-one setting where the students are taking them home. All other schools, they are on carts in specific classrooms. So if I'm a core teacher in one of those schools, I'd have a cart in my room similar to what we do with laptop carts already. These are just some of the peripherals that they receive as well. Like I said, carts, apps, which is software for the iPad, they also use existing software we already had in place for our laptops. One MacBook Pro is what is used to sync the carts, it's just a structural thing with Apple. And then intense professional development. Here are the number breakouts. Again, Robin did drop this in your Moodle room for you to access if you'd like, but these are the number breakouts of, of what each school gets. I think that's a duplicate slide possibly. Putting it in place, Sherman. Yeah. Here's the timeline. I spoke to this a second ago. Whale Branch High, of course, again, like I said, multiple years of doing this, they're ready to go. Hilton Head High, small group, so that's a nice group to start with, just a ninth grade academy because it's not the entire Hilton Head High School. And then gradual release. Again, this is based on a principal's decision with his or her staff. So one principal say, "Hey Cory, I'm really looking at phase five. I'm going to be totally honest with you, we have a lot going on, maybe a new principal." There is a lot of scenarios that could be happening. It also needs to be fluid that, say a principal says, "Well, I want to bump up to four if I pick five." That is fine, but it needs to be their decision, it's not our decision to make. Again, flexible. This is something I really want to point out, we have some teachers, and I, and I want to take this time to thank you for doing this, to be forward-thinking enough to allow us to do this, because there are districts across the country that are not, and our teachers are so excited. I get emails a lot from teachers saying, "I am very energized about this." And it again goes to the fact that I think we brought up at the last work session, a lot of them have this technology already as teachers, and they're bringing it in and using it with their kids on their one iPad that they have. So now to give them a whole class set and one professionally, we have some teachers that are just, are raring to go and we shouldn't stand in their way because they're going to be the champions that help the neighbor teacher that may be not seeing why we're doing this. And then professional development, they are going to receive their, their iPad at professional development sessions. That's key. They don't just get handed an iPad and say, "Good luck, have a good school year." It's they come to a training, they get their iPad, then go through an entire day of training, planning, then go to more training, and then that's when they start to decide, "I'm ready to go, this is what I want to do." So it is not a scenario where we just give and then they, that's it. This is what we've completed to date. As Dr. Truesdale said, we have worked with administrators and our tech services staff because then this is the group that's going to get the calls on, "What does this app do? Why is it doing this?", what have you. So they have received their iPads. Principals have started to receive trainings on their iPads. It's very hard to take an administrator out of their whole schedule for an entire day. So with administrators, we do mini-trainings because that fits what they can do. It's again, hard eight hours to do an iPad training with a principal or an administrator. User profiles, what I mean there, that's more technical side. It's sort of similar to what we do with laptops, teachers get a certain view on their laptops and they have a teacher profile, and students get a teacher, student profile, vice versa. It's more of a technical thing. So our tech staff has developed that from behind because those things are different. The iPads have been delivered to every school, so all 11 iPad schools have received shipments of their iPad and they're in secure locations. A majority of our carts and even 40 more received at Bluffton Middle today have been received at our schools and then put in secure locations. The carts though have not all, all been received. And like Dr. Truesdale said at the beginning, the last few years, we have been updating bandwidth and increasing our infrastructure. And that's something that will come up here in a second, that's something we need to monitor over time. In-process, what we've, what we're in the middle of right now, unboxing, barcoding, inventorying and scanning. When you have 7,600 of anything, keeping track of it, getting it right, making sure everything is in place is a big process, and that's what our techs and our schools are working in right now, is doing that process. Professional development, this is the initial plan, again, this is ongoing and will continue throughout this school year and beyond. The first week of training is really, it's a week and a half, starts August 2nd. Some of that is train-the-trainer model with some of my EdTech coaches, but starting on the 3rd, then the 6th through the 10th is all teachers. Teachers that are slated to get iPads are going to start coming to trainings. One day of initial training, and on the 10th, it'll then be content-specific. So if I'm a math teacher, I go to a math iPad training. The back-to-school week, the 15th through the 17th, we will have some trainers visiting schools, specific schools, and then our back-to-school rally is the 16th. There will be a lot of iPad and technology training in general at that. So again, teachers will come to a two-hour session, which with iPad will be content-specific again. Because we go from the getting started, the general stuff, again, to the more, "How would a history teacher use this?" This is what I'm really excited about, I believe I mentioned it to you before, students' back-to-school week. We actually have a group of, of college students that are providing professional development to schools on iPads that will come and work with our teachers and students at the same time. So the schools that are ready, they are going to have professional, like college students that are use this day in and day out of their lives in college, which again was our focus, one of the focuses of why we're doing this, are going to come in and show our teachers and our students how they use it and how they would use it in a math classroom or a science classroom. To me, that's really, really exciting to have that kind of environment. And that's sort of an innovative approach to professional development. We're going to be developing a lot of video tutorials because again, we're talking about time with professional development. Teachers should be allowed to do some of this professional development on their time, on their schedule, and a way we can do that is virtually with video tutorials, but then we'll also continue face-to-face. Purchasing of apps is a big deal because we get 50% off apps as an education location, so we have set up and we have that in place, and we are finalizing what apps will be on those lists. We're getting, going through lists throughout the country, what other schools have been using, and also things our coordinators have found, our teachers have found, and they're letting us know. We've also set in a place that if a teacher finds an app on their own that they think is amazing and they want to use it with their students, they can request that app, and then we can go through the process, if we have to purchase it, is it free, is it whatever, evaluate it and get it out to the teacher to use with their children, if it's something we want them to do. Purchasing of cases, the RFI has been awarded, so that is coming very soon. Repair services, RFP is out there, that has not been completed, but that will be completed in the next few weeks. So these are the items that are in process. And like I said, ongoing, our, the big thing is the professional development. That is going to be something that's just going to be key, just throughout this school year for these teachers that are going to have the iPads, it's going to get a lot of them. Even some teachers that don't have iPads are going to get some iPad training because you never know what the future may hold. District Professional Development Days will have some focus, and then like I said, mini sessions for principals and our leadership team. Purchasing of apps, I just reviewed that part. A big thing is analyzing our network usage. We do that ongoing anyways to see where are our spikes in bandwidth, where do we need more, where do we need more infrastructure? With integrating 7,600 devices that are going to be wireless hitting our infrastructure, we need to analyze that very, very closely. So that is something we've already set in place, some things to upgrade immediately once we start getting the data back in the first weeks of school year. We are actually doing some load balancing and some other sort of diagnostic tools now to replicate what a school would look like, like Bluffton Middle School, if all the students had iPads, to test our network on how it would recover and handle from that. And then our repair process, refining it and defining it and how it's going to work. Part of the RFP that's out there, or the RFI that's out there, is a two-week lag time or less in a repair. So if you do have a cracked screen, it should be two, two weeks or less that that's back to the school.
RFI is what?
Request for information.
Information?
Yeah, it's like a bid that we put out.
I've heard of RFPs and I've, but I've never heard of the RFI.
And it may be the wrong term, but that's.
Information is you gathering information from different vendors and it precedes a P, it precedes a proposal.
And then this is just sort of the last sort of scenario, and I referenced my photo. Now I'll show you just a brief video and open up to the questions.
We ask you to consider the long-ago case of the California 4th grader who barely studied until his teacher essentially bribed him to succeed. That turnaround student's name was Steve Jobs. As Bill Whitaker tells us now, the Apple founder's most enduring legacy may well be in the classroom.
Open up the covers of your iPad.
Today's digital classroom, no more notepads, no more scratch paper, and much smaller cubbyhood.
Your iPad away.
At Saint Mel's School, every one of their 570 students has been assigned an iPad, a $375,000 investment paid for by the school.
Do you miss your paper packet?
No.
It's all part of Joyce Cluse's vision of what the graduating class of 2020 will need to succeed in the world.
We believe that this piece of technology will enrich our students, will deepen their understanding, will support them, and will challenge them.
Teachers here have seen immediate benefits.
Scores have improved, their tests that they took last Friday, I have several 100%.
The iPads were handed out two weeks ago and all ready, students are paying more attention and playing with it on their own.
That doubles the educational input that they're getting because they're teaching themselves.
Sometimes people think that they're playing games, it's like, "Oh my gosh, I'm playing games," but they don't know that they're playing educational games and they're getting better at stuff.
What is it about the technology that creates that enthusiasm in the students?
This is their language, that this is their connection. It speaks a lot to what education should be.
The program is new, so the jury is still out on how iPads will impact test scores, but parents already are seeing positive results.
I see a love for learning in my child that is ignited that I haven't seen in a long time.
It just adds enthusiasm to what you're doing.
5th grader Jack Abunisar doesn't mind that iPads have no games, no access to YouTube. He's having fun with his homework and believes that what is now extraordinary will soon be just the way it is.
No more pencils, no more erasers, no more paper. I think it'll all end up like this, and I think this is just the beginning.
Check out these smiles, it's hard to believe it could get much better than this. Bill Whitaker, CPS News, Woodland Hills, California.
And, and again, that was an elementary example, but the concept is exactly the same. Charleston School District did this last year, one elementary school saved $17,000 in paper and printing and copying in one year, the first year. So that, that wasn't even what the best it could be. They also saw at the high school level and the middle school level that a lot more seat time, a lot more students coming to school rather than skipping school, so there's that engagement factor, and they also saw a reduction in referrals for discipline because students again are engaged, and that classroom management tool is, "Well, if you do it again, you're not going to be able to use the iPad." And that, that does a lot for a student because they're, they are pretty cool. So with that, questions?
Questions, Mr. Rivers?
Yeah, you mentioned earlier about the college students who will be helping those who are ready to roll out.
Yes.
And I guess my follow-up question with that, how can we get the college students to help those who need some encouragement, as Dr. Truesdale likes to say sometimes? How do we get them to help those people to encourage them to, you know, to move a little faster, so to speak?
Exactly. They will be visiting every school. They'll be coming into the classroom to work with those that are, have, are ready to go, like Hilton Head High and Whale Branch High, and some of the other schools may have the carts there for that day to start that process, but you're exactly right, they are there to be sort of motivating factors and letting them understand that this is where it's going, just like that, this is only the start, the beginning of how, how great it's going to be. They're going to visit all 11 schools, yep.
Thank you. Anyone else? Scott?
When you go into an English class and you get your iPad and you sign on to whatever your username is and you start, start your, start your essay, and class is over and you log off and you set it down on the cart, and you go to your math class and you blow through your test, you can then open another iPad and go back to your English homework from the class before?
Exactly right. We're going to utilize cloud services, which means it's all hosted in the internet, so things like Google allow you to store word processing documents, spreadsheets, and we're Google Apps for Education locations, we have access to all of that for free, which is wonderful. And then the Edmodo piece is that students can turn it in, but you're exactly right, they would go to their English class, pull an iPad out of the cart, do their word processing, maybe it's creative writing, maybe it's whatever, log out, saves all their information, no uploading, no whatever, go to math class, do whatevers in math, but then if they had time, so Study Hall or wherever, we don't have Study Halls, but if they had time, they could actually log in and look at their English assignment again on whatever iPad they're at. What's nice, they could also access it at home on whatever computer they're at. That's the, the cloud, leveraging the cloud is huge because it provides universal access.
So if I go home and I want to pick right back up on that creative writing I was doing in the first class I was in, you can access from your home regular.
Exactly. You log into your Google account, which we're setting up for the students, and it'll be right there. It's all real-time, there's collaboration, it's just, it's really, it's really incredible.
Any other?
Yes, kicking back to what Julie said, to make sure I'm understanding. So you're using an iPad at school, but at home you have something different than an iPad, but you still be able to access the same information?
The same information. All of your documents, spreadsheets, presentations that you're working on, and then also what your teacher's syllabus and all that they have can be accessed from any device at any time.
Now, just, just a check and balance question. What kind of circuit breakers do we have where you can prevent somebody else from doing somebody's stuff?
That's something we have every day in place that we, we work on to get better. With this, it sort of goes back to what Julie was saying with logging in and out. The teachers are going to have to be, make sure, that's part of the classroom management, that when a student comes in, they log in as them, and they log out when they're at the end of class so it's ready for the next child. But it's the same scenario we face sometimes in our computer labs. Student forgets to log out, well then unfortunately, the next student that comes in could have access to his or her information.
This question's also about home.
Yeah, home, and, and also I guess, you know, I'm just thinking of scenarios where I'm having a challenge, Laura is more proficient in it, we're good friends, and I'm like encouraging, enticing, or whatever, to do my work.
To do your work.
How do, how do you, I mean, what kind of safeguards can we put into, because kids are creative.
They are very creative, and we, like I said, we're already battling some of this every day anyways.
I'm just trying to look for a problem, but I mean, you know, because I saw recently where, like with these mobile devices, the parents go and try to control the computer, but they can go on their little games and still access the internet and stuff like that.
Yep. Really, we'll have to work with our teachers, our teachers and principals on that and identifying it, and we've had that happen at schools already with just computers, not even one-to-one computing, but just computer lab scenarios. And it's really, it's, it's knowing your students because you know what type of work, especially a writing class, you're going to know real quick, but it's, it's really kind of.
Yeah, I know it's a challenge, but I'm just something, something to think about.
It is, it is definitely, we, we think about it a lot.
Ms. Evans?
Yes, sir.
Well, I would say that the safeguard is there, that's always been there, and that is, you know, I have a brother-in-law who always used to joke about the fact that the only Spanish he knew was "Steve, pass your homework," you know, kind of thing. And, but the safeguard is, one, teachers know their students' work, and two, at some point there's an assessment that, that points out that they haven't got a clue. And it's so out of, out of context with all the other work that they, that it becomes clear what they've done, and I think one of the things that Mr. Speaks and I found out that can be really unique about this is I can do a 25-problem math test, and I put it out there, and although every child is getting the same 25 questions in a totally different order, so that Michael can't be looking at me and say, "What's your answer for three?" Because.
Three's not three on his.
Three's not three on his, you know.
Yeah, and they can't look over the shoulder or around the table.
Exactly. But, but they're all getting the same questions.
They're all getting the same 25 set.
Just in a totally different pattern.
And we do that now with our NWA, a lot of our assessments, we do that.
Anything else? Anyone else? Ms. Bush?
This is all very, this is all very exciting, but where, where is the Board of Education in this rollout? Are we getting iPads as well?
Oh, good question.
One of the, one of the things that I wanted us to discuss under policy tomorrow, board policies, do we want to have what I call a technology policy for the board in terms of what it should, what it should have? And I, I hope that we have the time tomorrow, one, one of my items is tuition, but one of the things, the other things I hope is a technology policy for the board, for the board, for us in terms of how we function, okay? In terms of iPads or not, what are we going to do?
Well, if we, if we're the leaders of the district, you would think that we would be the forerunners.
Let's not assume that, that's, that's why I think it's important for us to have a specific, I think we ought to have a specific statement and position on that. That, that's what I'd like us to do. Yes, sir? Because I want to move on, remember we're going to leave by 4:30.
Okay. Just a statement about this, and I appreciate Cory's presentation, because I had raised the question that I was concerned that it looked like we were going to try and start everybody on the same day. The phase-in part really helped answer that question for me, that, that school's going to make individual choices about that. Because frankly, my concern was, I didn't know how we were going to cover everything at the same time. And, and I, I know people tire of me bringing up experience, but we tried this in the mid-'90s and had failed because there weren't enough people in the schools to actually supervise the implementation, and I see that it's going to be handled very differently this time around.
And that's shared by principals and teachers alike, that saying, so it's really when they're ready, we, as technology services, they were, we're there to support them, so we'll have everything in place advanced, but when they're ready, that's when they're ready to go.
I, I too share the concern, but I still have a concern, I hope that teachers and the schools would take into account parent groups and getting the parents engaged, because the parents need to be supportive of their kids doing it. So I hope that those who, particularly those who are late, let's make sure that we find ways to engage those parents so they can support their students, their kids. All right? Anything else? Anyone else? Good.
Cory.
Thank you very much.
Good job, Cory.
Very good job. We are down to discipline alternative education. Right?
Mr. McCord is up.
Mr. McCord, and we're pretty close to being, we've got to get some time to go into our final executive session. You want to go for a drink?
No.
For those who need to take a necessary, go ahead and we'll give Mr. McCord a chance, we're going to do a, a, a quick five-minute water break, and then we'll resume, and we're going to start in five minutes now, folks, we're going to resume in five minutes.
Well, if he was recommended by Sean, he's got to be a good man. I said, if you're recommended by Sean, you've got to be a good man. Because he did a fantastic job for us.
Okay, Mr. McCord is now on.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
This is portion of today's meeting where, if I'm correct, I want you to present some information that relates to student discipline, County School District.
What I do have for you, and that is not shown on the screen, I'd like to start off with the out-of-school suspensions and expulsions by schools here in the district. And of course, one of the things that I am at a disadvantage right now is identifying what works and what has not worked. This is, of course, my first opportunity to present this information before you as I am meeting with principals, we are exploring what avenues we can take to address the out-of-school suspensions as well as those students that have been recommended for expulsion. That information again is not shown on the screen, but it is presented here to you, and if you have questions, I'll be more than happy to address those at this time before I move forward.
You're talking about the single sheet here?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, that is clear.
Does anyone have any questions about this sheet? I know it's kind of early, but looking at numbers.
Number two, centralization of middle school program, you have ACE.
No, no, you saw what this sheet right now. This, this, again, the data.
Ms. Bush?
And I understand there will be a fall meeting in November, and I'll be able to better.
In detail.
Show you in detail what the district trends have been for the past few years.
You have, you have to press it again for a long while, under the bottom, just hold it, hold it, hold it for a while, keep it depressed.
Ms. Bush?
Thank you, Robyn.
Where are these 42 students that have been expelled? Where, where are they now? I mean, what, what happened to them?
Now, based on the information that you have before you, the 42 students that were recommended and subsequently expelled from Beaufort County School District, these students will return August 20th here at the district office in the Right Choices program. Prior to August 20th, we do have two meetings that we have scheduled, we sent letters out yesterday, I'm sorry, Tuesday this week, and you have a copy of the letter that went home to families on July 18th, that's yesterday, outlining what our expectations are as, as far as meeting with families prior to returning to Right Choices. This is something that is a little different than what has been done in the past. One of the reasons we want to meet with families and students is so we can best chart their paths back to their regular home school after they have submitted themselves for a period of no less than 45 days to start the school year off here at Right Choices. Yes, sir.
Ms. Evans? Can you finish, Ms. Bush? You finished?
The school with RCP, what school is that? RCP?
Right Choices.
Oh, thank you. I was going to say, I don't know that was a school.
Okay. Ms. Evans?
Yes, sir.
I want to make sure we're speaking the same language. My previous understanding of an expelled student was one that was totally out of the district and receiving no services.
Correct, a student that has been sent home.
Okay, so we had 42 last year, and they're going to be given the opportunity to come back. Okay, so we had 42 last year, and they're going to be given the opportunity to come back, but they have to go through Right Choices to come back in, correct?
Correct. These 42 students will start the year off at Right Choices.
And do we have some students that finished the year in Right Choices that are going to begin the year in Right Choices?
I'm not sure if I understood your question.
Well.
Are those the rollover students?
Yeah.
Okay, yes. Actually, what we did, Mr. Evans, is there were 12 students that finished the year that had not completed their time. We sent an email out last week to principals of those schools affected to ask if those students could return. And the reason being is because the students have varying degrees of sentencing. And in order for us to have a consistent model, we thought it would be best if all students would serve definite periods of time, times that coincide with breaks in semesters and breaks in quarters, so that a student won't return to a school day 22nd of a school year that's already been in place, which puts a kid at a disadvantage as well as the class and the teacher. We're looking to only re-enter students at the breaking point. With the 12 students that you're asking about, we asked principals if those students could start the year off at their schools under a strict student behavior contract. They have the right to say yes or no. Some have opted to receive the students, and some have said they'd rather them start at Right Choices. So those students will start with the Right Choices program on August 20th.
Can I answer Ms. Bell? Sorry.
What on earth would an early childhood student do to get kicked out of school? Kindergarten?
What do you see there?
Children had early childhood syndrome.
I, I can, while he's fishing for that, I can tell you, when I went with the district, there was a principal that wanted a kindergarten expelled, and we coached him out of that.
Okay. Now, if I'm looking at this correctly, is that H-H-E-C-C? It looks like they were suspended, not, not expelled.
Yes, that's correct.
To get suspended?
Yeah.
There are a lot of things you can do to be suspended.
Oh, yeah.
That's K through five. That's K through five. But that's not expelled, but that's out-of-school suspension.
Okay, yes, sir.
Y'all, I know we just stare my kids down anyway.
Parents don't.
It don't work no more.
We need to patent that stare.
I'm going to have to open my mouth.
You're talking about the Pat Summitt stare.
You know what? The Sherry kids today, oh, what's the word? You frontin' me? Some word they got, some kind of word they got. You stare kids now, that's like.
Well, they stare back.
That's like they want to fight.
It's mean mugging. That's what they call it, mean mugging.
That's abuse. That's abuse, you know.
There's a term that they use.
Let's go on to.
Really, that's another abuse, staring your kid down nowadays.
If, if I could just direct your attention to the letter that was sent home, this is the letter that was sent home this week, notifying parents and students that we intend to meet with them on two occasions prior to August 20th. One, to explain the new process and procedures that we're going to implement with the Right Choices program, and then two, the individual conference again, so that we can tailor-make a program for the students' return. Now, of course, this is slightly different than what's been done in the past, and so we're going to ask that not only you be patient if you receive information from parents regarding this, but that the students be patient, because we want, ideally, for all students when they return to their home schools to be adequately prepared to continue to the point of graduation. As opposed to being placed back in their regular school and returning with another recommendation shortly after they return.
Mr. Campbell?
Yeah, I, number two, where is the centralization of middle school program? ACE, that's going to be at ACE?
I'm sorry?
Where is that form right there?
Number two.
Number two.
Oh, you jumped.
We haven't gotten there, you're talking about this letter right now. Unless I'm mistaken, I thought we were talking about this letter.
We were.
This one right here.
Yes, sir. Let me go ahead and get ready for number two.
I was, in fact, I was, with the help of Mr. Foster, I, I got in touch with both of the, the alternative schooling in Norfolk. One of them is Madison Alternative High School, and they, they deal with middle school and high school students. And then they also have a Norfolk Technical School, where there, any student that expelled from school, they don't come back to the regular school, the high school, this is where they, they go, go there. So, but I, I spoke to both, the site manager and also the principal, they're supposed to be sending some information.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Bush?
Yes.
Looking at your out-of-school suspension, this again, somebody is a very large numbers of students. Are we, and I understand that you're, you're new to the position, but are we sort of going to review these suspensions, exactly whether they could have been prevented or not been suspended, or the reasons why they were suspended, and all those kinds of things? Because some of these are very high, over 200 kids. And it could be the same, in some cases, it may be the same child suspended twice, or more than once during the year.
Right. And, and thank you for asking that question. What we're going to do this year to help, again, in determining who was suspended and for what reason, we're going to look at all of the data for each individual school, see where the high numbers exist, the reasons for the suspensions, and we're, we're looking to implement a monthly meeting with the assistant principals of the middle and high schools, so that we can better coordinate again the efforts of everyone in the district to know what the vision is. Everyone should cater to their particular school culture, but we don't want disproportionate numbers at one school for situations that may not be reflected in another school for the same offense. So we're, we're looking forward to having those meetings beginning in August, and each month we will disaggregate the data to see which schools have high numbers and in which areas those numbers are, and we will coordinate the efforts so that students, I'm sorry, so that assistant principals will be able to share examples of successes for how they're dealing with situations at schools.
One other.
Or strategies for success.
Thank you. One, one other thing, Ms. Bush, as well, is that you probably want to look at the total number of students enrolled in the school, and look at it by percentages.
Percentage-wise, right.
Thank you.
And you made a good point, sometimes you'll have a student, let's just call him Gregory McCord, he may have been suspended 20 times.
Yeah, in the same.
And may not be reflected accurately.
Okay. Go ahead.
If I.
On this letter, I'm sorry.
Yes, ma'am.
It says that you want them to come in two times for two interviews, basically? Is that what, if I'm reading this right?
No, one, one is an orientation, that is a general orientation with everyone present, and one, again, is the individual meeting. So as a group, we will meet to discuss what the new procedures will be, and then individually, we'll have an opportunity to find out. Again, some of this is so that I can know what has occurred here in the district, to get a little bit of insight about the type of students that were recommended, why they were recommended, to find out a little about the families. That will give us an opportunity to interview these families and students one-on-one.
And these are, this is for the students who finished out the school in Right Choices?
These are for students who were removed from all schools.
This expelled category.
Correct, correct.
Can these kids come and, and see you and talk to you, even if their parents don't come with them?
In most cases, I, I would rather the parent be present.
Well, I, I understand.
In an event where a parent cannot be present, then we'll look to find some options.
I would imagine that the kids that have the biggest problems don't have to react to their parents.
And sometimes that, that has occurred, but I can tell you, in my previous role as a student services officer, parents would always come, and if a parent could not come, we would find a way to make sure that we had a responsible adult accompany the kid. I think it makes a tremendous difference when everyone knows what the expectations are on the front end.
Okay.
Okay. I have for you some proposed soft changes for the alternative education program. As noted, hearing proceedings, prior to this year, I believe the hearing proceedings went with the recommendation for expulsion, the students and the families came here, the hearing officer heard the case, disposed whatever consequence would be to the family, informed the family and the student of the consequence, and then gave what I considered and said earlier, varying degrees of sentencing. So we are changing the proceeding so that Terry Dingle, who served as the hearing officer, will have a consistent pattern meting out consequences, so that you won't have one get 10 days, another get 25 days, one get, and so forth. The re-entry into the school district is going to change. Before this year, you could just come back and apply for enrollment. One of the things we're going to look to do differently beginning this year, students that re-enter next year will do so after having fulfilled requirements by the district office. We found it best, again, I'm speaking from experiences prior to Beaufort County, I found it best that we put a program in place that allows students to show that they understand the error of their ways, and to demonstrate their willingness to be on track. And we would do this by ways of enhancing their academic standings. We would give book assignments, students had to read certain books, books that talked about character education, good decision-making, books that shared experiences from those that have overcome obstacles to make it back on the right path. We also incorporate community service, as well as having those individual conferences with the parents and the students to discuss what did not go right. Number two, the centralization of middle school program, oh, I'm sorry.
I've got one more question.
Yes.
Can you quickly tell me the difference between Right Choices, Gateways, and Spring Board?
I can. Right Choices is the program here at the district office for students that have been recommended and subsequently removed from schools based on infractions that are considered to be our category of one offenses, drugs, weapons, the more serious offenses, as, as well as middle school. Gateway is for middle school students that may not be off-track, off-track behavioral-wise, but they need some extra attention. Spring Board is for the overage population, that eight-and-a-half, students that were not promoted from eighth to ninth, but again, we want to move them along and encourage them to move forward, so we have a program in place that will allow them to move past the eighth-grade retention and enter into high school as a 10th grader, if they're successful. Yes, sir?
One C, I understand what you, you said about having more uniform sentencing, or whatever.
Right.
For lack of a better word. Is there any consideration of having the staff in Right Choices? Let's say I get assigned, and my assignment is for 30 days. Is there any consideration of the Right Choices staff being able to say at the end of 30 days, no, we don't think Bill's ready to go back yet? Things he said, the way he continues to act, you know, defiance that we're seeing here at Right Choices, those kinds of things? Because I, I always thought that one of the problems we had was, I think some kids looked at it and said, hey, 45 days, big deal. I'm out in 45 days, no matter how I act. And I, I think, you know, we've got professionals in there, just like we have professionals everyplace else.
Right.
I think they should have the opportunity maybe to make that judgment.
And that's a great question. Again, I think with having Terry Dingle as the director, and knowing him for just three weeks, and going over ideas and what we look forward to as far as the vision for the Right Choices or the Alternative Education Program, that will be one of the components, that the director, that's Terry Dingle, will make a decision, as opposed to a kid saying, okay, I fulfilled my days, I did my community service, I'm going regardless. So that's one of the reasons that we want to meet with families and students, so that we can let them know what the expectations will be. You could very well serve 45 days, do your community service, but not be in what we consider the state of mind to return to your regular, regular zone school. So that, that will be put in place.
Anyone else?
Centralization of middle school programs. Yes, sir.
I just want to, that's going to be at ACE?
And.
We're debating that right now.
That is, that is in.
We're working on it.
Discussion. Right, that's in discussion.
We're going to finish that discussion Tuesday at noon.
But the goal, can I share with them what the goal is?
Right.
The goal is, so that we can have one program where we can utilize the services of Dr. Cynthia Hayes, Ms. Susan Cole Gillum, to have a program where we can monitor student behavior, character ed, and make sure that we're moving students along the correct academic path, so that we won't have a group north of the border, north of the Broad, and south of the Broad.
It's the border.
We're going to have, it's those signs going up 95.
Further up, some basic dicks in life.
Okay.
You need to put Pedro out there.
Yeah, we need to have. But again, so that we can have one program and we can better serve the students, we need to have one site. So we are in discussions.
So Right Choice will stay where it is.
Right Choices.
It's going to stay here.
Right, right now.
Okay.
Right.
I, I don't know whether Mr. Campbell's raising a concern. I would only raise the concern from a perception point of view. We did have a program where we moved eighth, overage eighth graders into ACE, to try and give them an opportunity to, because we thought they were at high risk for dropping out, and trying to give them some, some career and technology background. I will tell you, when I got here, ACE was used as an alternative school, and it demeaned the entire program. And, and so I give some consideration to whether there's another place, or a wing at another place. I understand that trying to get it centralized someplace and having one program, that, that makes all kinds of sense. I, I think if part of our concern of late is to bring ACE back to the state it might have been in a few years ago, that putting an alternative program there.
Yes, sir.
May undermine that.
I'd love to ask y'all's input on that, if I might. Mr. Chairman, could I ask a question?
Please.
We're wrestling with that exact issue, Mr. Evans, and here's the problem. We're bringing fifth graders to Robert Smalls.
Exactly.
They are 10, 11-years-old. Overage for grade eighth graders and ninth graders are 15, 16-years-old. So when we were meeting with Ms. Smith over the summer before Mr. McCord came here, Cynthia, we've been in a meeting with her, our issues are, wow, that's, even though they're in a different wing and they're separated, whatever. Also, Dr. Simmons is trying to revamp ACE, and you all probably are aware, ACE board members are, that we have folks who are doing a two-hour course in the morning, a two-hour course in the afternoon, and nothing in the middle, and our other teachers in both counties are teaching four-and-a-half, five hours. Is there an opportunity for what we call a skinny, a one-period 45-minute class in the middle of the day, for kids who can come in, who are in the program, who are taking a, a, a career and technical class, perhaps coming in and take a culinary class, or coming and taking a health occupy, health terminology class, a short-period class, not a two-hour class, and be able to beef up some of the enrollment at ACE, which has dropped off some? So we're in, in that debate right now. The big, Dr. Simmons is more than willing for us to do that, and there are portables on one side of the building that are currently vacant. Phyllis's worry is about getting it painted and ready for ref, refresh for the beginning of school. We are renovating Robert Smalls Middle School, getting it ready, and of course, McCracken is there, and we already have the mobiles there, and that's all set up. But in having, discussing whether or not we need to bring some synergy to those programs, they need to be somewhere central. So it wouldn't, many of the students who go into those programs are from Ladies Island Middle School, Beaufort High School area, so to put them on a bus to take them to McCracken's is just not right. So what we were looking at was trying to figure out a way to synergize it. Robert Smalls is where they're slated to go currently, and we can still do that, but we're worrying about the fifth graders, and would love to get board input.
So the student that you're talking about, to ACE, which is, there will be kind of overage?
These are the overage for grade programs. Yes, sir?
Some would be, some would just be regular age middle school, six through eight, for Gateway. We're speaking about the Spring Board now.
At the, at, well, tell me if I'm wrong, Cynthia, say if I say this right. The overage for grade students are, for all, I don't know if a better word, recruited to talk with the parents, to say, if you go through, if you join this program, we are hoping that you can join your peers in grade 10. They start at the beginning of the year. The other students who are assigned for discipline, infractions, who are the right grade age, they don't come in on day one. Am I wrong? They come, they come in like the end of the first quarter, and they'll come in and out.
So those students, if they go to ACE, will they also be involved in, 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 in
So those students, if they go to ACE, will they also be involved in the course, some of the courses at ACE as far as?
Not the six through eight, I'm sorry.
They would be?
Well, we haven't gotten that far yet. So we're meeting on Tuesday at the school. In, in my previous life, we had middle schoolers who were involved in career and tech classes because they're, the overage for grade ones. Chronologically, they're eligible to participate, say in, you know, a class, a shop class, a building construction class, not the sixth graders, but.
Well, that's the reason I asked that question because one of the, the things that the lady told me from Norfolk yesterday, at the technicals high school that they have, those students go there for, because they're overage and, and they are taking technical courses. So that's the reason why I asked.
We're hoping to enhance their computer knowledge because if they come back into the tenth grade, suppose we're able to catch them up to their peers in the tenth grade, we want to make sure that they have all the advantages of those students who have come through the ninth grade academies with their iPads.
She said that what they do, those students don't go back to the school, they graduate from that school.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. And, and that's what we've had in a number of other districts, I know. Did Orangeburg have that, Mr. McCord?
No, no. I haven't seen that model.
We had an alternative school at Lexington Five and we had, we had one in Oconee County, too.
That's what we did with overage eighth graders years ago. They were given the opportunity to go there, but they stayed there.
And Mr. Campbell, do you know we already have an overage for grade program at ACE?
It's called the Pace.
The Pace program, thank you. It used to be called Nineteen, now it's called Pace. So we're looking to blend those possibly.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Evans, you get yours in?
Well, yeah, I just, I'm, I'm very worried about how we build ACE up if there might be a public perception out there that that's where the bad kids are going.
Miss Bush and then Miss Bell?
Well, my concern has always been middle school kids mixing with high school kids. Cynthia and I have talked about this, I just never, I've always had an issue with it. I think that moving those kids on the ACE campus needs to be probably explored some more because I know that during the early orientation phase, that was the perception, you know, take all the bad kids out of school, use them on the ACE. And I'm not sure if they've ever been able to erase that perception. But if we could find another place to put our middle schoolers, we're not talking fifth graders here.
No.
No.
Thank you, okay, even sixth graders. But I, I do, I would like to see another place for our middle schoolers to go and not have them mixing with high school kids. I'm just not sure where the ACE is the right place.
Spell?
Well, I think it would be a matter of how we spin it. If we spin it as a positive, I agree with you. I don't want to give it a negative connotation. I mean, we're trying so hard out there to get away from it. You took it and you made it an opportunity for these kids.
And that would also.
It's almost like Robert Smalls. We say we're going to have fifth graders there, we're going to have middle school kids there, we're going to keep them segregated. If at ACE you're going to keep them segregated, they have some portable classrooms. The one thing is, if we had another place, the problem we have is, Lufton is busting it, it seems. That's, the other place is near the middle of the, and we don't really have that many options where we have space where we have it in the middle of the district. So I don't know if we have any other choices. And long, long transportation rides like the way our branch kids used to do is not the way to go.
You had touched on Mrs. Hayes, I'm sorry.
No, we didn't.
Dr. Hayes.
Just to loosen up.
Okay, good. Just moving along, we are going to incorporate character education pieces into the Alternative Education Program. Community service requirements, again, I talked about this earlier, will be for all students that are recommended for various offenses at the schools. We find that this is going to be very important in the overall development of the students as we, again, get them ready for high school graduation. We're looking to add a guidance counselor or someone with a guidance counselor background to assist with the transitioning of students back to the regular ed program. One of the things that I've found most effective as a high school principal is knowing that when students return from an alternative program that they return on track. And what I mean by that is, I have seen situations where students would come back at the end of a semester and we not have anywhere for the student to be placed. In other words, they took classes at the alternative school that didn't quite fit with the classes or courses that were being taught at the regular school. And so having someone on staff with a counselor background that can assist with making sure student records are intact is going to help us all. The addition of the middle school administrators, I said earlier, Dr. Cynthia Hayes and Ms. Susan Gillum will assist with the middle school programs wherever the site that we determine will be most effective. They will be on-site as staffers to ensure that students are being moved along both academically and behaviorally and the development of a district office mentoring program. I haven't talked much about this, I think I touched the subject with one or two. But we're looking at, and I want to go to perceptions, if you don't mind. I heard you mention a moment ago, Mr. Evans, sometimes the perception of students as they are recommended for expulsion is that they're wayward youth, they can't be retooled, they can't be retrained. In other words, we kind of, with our own perceptions, push them out of the system. I thought one of the best things that I heard Dr. Truesdale share with me during the time that I met with her was that we have the alternative program for high school students here at the district office. And I said, wow, now that's powerful. That is powerful because where else would we have such an opportunity to create a program where each one in this building can impact an individual student who's two-hundred feet away from the office? How powerful will it be to have you come in and mentor a student once a week, once every other week, just to find out how they're doing?
We want good role models.
We want good role models. I was pointing at, I was pointing at Phyllis.
Oh, okay.
No, but how, how powerful would it be? And so the goal, as we start off with this, is to find a way so that each person can connect with a student in the Right Choices program. Not only will this help with the perception, but it also will help us as adults in the building recognize and realize what we do each and every day, I think, in the district office. It's easy to get lost in the shuffle. Another thing that I think is very powerful is just seeing the pictures on the wall as reminders of what we're here for. If we have that one-on-one interaction, that day-to-day, week-to-week interaction with these students, we can turn some lives around. Students, as you know, when they make poor decisions, sometimes it's opposition or defiance, sometimes it's just that no one has taken that time to spend with them outside of the homes. And so we're going to try to develop a program here soon. Okay, I have Mr. Speaks and Miss Bell and Mr. Evans. Remember time, folks.
Yes, I wanted to do is that you mentioned something previously in reference to the student make the transition back into the home, home school or field school. But, but thing is, I want, not just to come back behaviorally, I want to come back with the knowledge. I, I want them, I want something to be there at the alternative school that related, related to exactly what they were getting at the high school.
Right.
Because we are so highly involved in technology now, it could be, it should be happening.
Yes, sir.
And if it's not happening, we don't need the technology for this. But I know we do. And I think that that will make the transition for academically and those students filter in beautifully. But if we don't do that, it's going to be the same thing over again.
Great point. We recently, as recent as this week, we have looked at some programs that may assist us in, again, ensuring that when students return, they'll return without having missed a beat academically.
That's right.
So, great point. Okay, Ms. Bell and then Mr. Evans.
Actually, that, that was part of my question. I just don't really understand the process of what happens over here. If you're in the fifth grade and you get, you bring a knife to school or whatever causes you to get out of school suspension, do you, does a bus bring you over here?
Transportation is provided by the district. But I don't believe we have fifth graders, fifth graders, I think we do something different. I'm not sure, but I can.
Okay, well, let's say sixth grade.
Okay.
It's just middle school on up from here?
Right, six through twelve.
So you have, at any given moment, you could have a handful of kids over there, right?
Correct.
Are they all in one room?
We have several rooms. I think we have seven classrooms, fully equipped. Right.
And, and do I go by bus to my home school and go and get my books and then bring them over here?
No, the bus actually picks you up from home. And your books are collected from your school by the staff at Right Choices.
And I should be doing the same homework that my kids in my class are doing?
That's one of the things that we're, we're looking to overhaul. And again, having Dr. Hayes and Ms. Gillum at Gateway will help push that effort here with Terry Dingell and the staff. We're, we're looking, again, to explore programs that will allow that to continue. And it may not be page for page, but it will be subject matter as it's related to the individual school.
Just like Mr. Speaks said, with the technology, we could put that kid down in front of a monitor with some headphones on and he should be able to view exactly what's happening in his actual classroom. Because, you know, you're already behind the eight ball and you've got a discipline problem and you know you do. But then six weeks later to arrive back at school and you're six weeks behind.
Put you at a disadvantage, more so, right. And that's one of the gaps we're looking to close.
You know what they call the place, right? They call it Wrong Choices. You, you know that, right?
I've heard that.
Well, that's the first time I've heard that. Ms. Evans? Okay, he doesn't want to speak?
Two comments. I was just waiting for it, trying to be polite. Two comments. First of all, I really want to congratulate you on point four. Although I think there's been a lot of informal counseling going on with staff in there, there's never been a formal counselor with counselor preparation assigned there that I know of. And I, I think for some of these kids, having regular contact with somebody in a formal program that talks about changing their behaviors, particularly around accepting direction, accepting authority, because that's, let's face it, that's where a lot of these kids are, got in trouble in the first place.
Right.
It's going to be very, very helpful. The second thing is, and unfortunately, you know, and this particularly hits high school kids, there's just some courses that you can't teach in Right Choices. I'm, I'm sorry, it's nice, a lot of stuff can go on the computer, but you can't teach a kid, if they're in orchestra at their home high school, they, nobody in there is teaching them how to use the violin, kind of thing. So there's a fallback, okay? There is unfortunately the drawback that there's going to be some areas that I might have left my home high school and had a credit that I was working on and I get here and I can't work on it any longer. But I agree with Mr. Speaks, we can do a lot of stuff with technology to fill in most areas.
Right. Thank you. I have Mr. Wilson and then?
Just a comment.
Miss Bush. Just for, for us to be mindful of the time.
Just a comment to Mrs. Bell. Before we had Right Choices here, we used to send them outside the district. And as far as I'm concerned, there was almost no academic performance improvement. And over here, there's been a big improvement. And I think, I think we're continuing to try to strive on that program because before, if a kid went away for two months, there's no way to ever recover when he came back.
Ms. Bush and Mr. Speaks, folks, I'm going to ask that we let Mr. McCord continue after this, but go ahead.
Couple of things. Number, number three, your character education program, is that just for the kids who are at Right Choices or Gateway and Spring Board?
All, all of the alternative programs, yes, ma'am.
I really like your mentoring program.
Okay, I do, too. I do support what Mr. Evans said about the guidance counselors. What I found since I've been here, excuse me, is some of the, some of the principals, once that child has been referred out of their school because of their behavior to Right Choices, I'm not sure that they're, in many cases, they're welcomed back at the high school. And so when a child goes back to the high school and they have not been, and the academics have not been kept up here, and they go back and number one, they're not quite welcomed by the, the administrator and they're behind in academics, guess what? They end up right back where they started from. So I, I'm very happy that we're trying to, to, to change that, I really am. And I think the addition of Ms. Hayes and Ms. Gillum to work with the middle school youngsters, because some, some intervention needs to happen there with these kids, middle school kids. They're growing, the hormones are racing and they're just wild and crazy. So hopefully, not crazy, I take that back, but the hormones racing and hopefully that will help them to settle down and be about their academics.
Your hormones.
That's it. She's a mother, she's a grandmother.
Uh, Mr. Speaks?
Now, what I would say, I would, I would stress that only the core courses are being taught to do by technology. Now, for as, if it's still an alternative school, getting the core courses there of technology, but also there are some classes that, maybe a class that is not part core course. For example, let me, let me give an example, the band. So if the band is practicing after school in the afternoon, would you all allow this student to go and practice, too?
No, sir.
So that student will be?
Make it fully for the rights.
But see, the thing is then, by the time that student gets back to the school, well, that student could be out of band completely. You see what I'm talking, because that should be part of his grading. And you, we are saying, okay, only thing you get from this is just saponic. And he's going to miss the saponic because he's not there, then he's going to miss the, uh, uh, your, um, marching band, part of it, and therefore, that means he is going to fail at class.
But unfortunately, Mr. Speaks, that student has lost that privilege.
Yes. Consequences.
Not, not rights.
But so he lost a privilege for academic, that's what we are saying.
No, we, we would work with the student on the credit for the class. But as far as participating with the marching band and the out-of-school stuff, the student has lost that privilege.
But what I'm saying, the marching band is still part of his credit. If he said, I signed up for band and, and.
We give them something else academically.
And somewhere along the line, October, we put him out. So he's going to lose that credit completely.
We would work with that student not to lose that credit, Mr. Speaks, but he would certainly lose that privilege of participating with the marching band and the activities. We would somehow fill that gap with whatever we would work with the band director.
Okay, anyone else?
Yeah, just, Mr. Evans? Just wanted to make a comment. You said something earlier about consistency. And my, my concern is that the domino effect doesn't take place where, where kids are led to believe that their bad behavior is okay or is brushed, brushed aside and that down the road it gets worse. They're learning, they're learning bad practices and it's being reinforced. And then when someone really gets to the point that, look, what you're doing is wrong, so much time has wasted. You understand what I'm, what I'm trying to, what I'm trying to say?
Thinking.
Yeah, and I think sometimes that can be a problem, too, where kids think that what they're doing, even though it's wrong, but there aren't any real consequences. And then when someone applied consequences, now you got a whole big situation because it wasn't taken care of in the first place.
And if I'm following you correctly, one of the goals of meeting with the assistant principals, again, it will be so that we can discuss strategies for success as it relates to student discipline, school-wide, because you are correct. You can have a student that does a particular thing over and over again and it's ignored on a small scale, and then when someone has had enough, they recommend the student for something that has been going on. In other words, a culture has existed previously and they're being penalized all of a sudden. So again, having these discussions with the assistant principals, I think, will help us all. We were able to establish a model for success. I heard Dr. Truesdale mention in Lexington Five when I served in the same role. After the first year, the expectations were known throughout the district by administrators and it bode well for the community and for the students alike because everyone knew what the procedures were, what the policies were, and we were able to, I think in my opinion, serve the district and the students better through the Office of Student Services. And we look forward to doing the same thing here. We're just asking that you be a little patient with us, not too patient, but on the front end, if you hear some moans and groans, just understand the finished product is what we're looking for. Go ahead, sir. Okay. Just moving right along with the code of conduct updates, and that's it for the proposed changes. Now for the code of conduct updates, this is going to be delivered to you and I'm not sure, you don't have to pull this up, Rob. Okay, well, you have, if, if you haven't received this, it's kind of thick, so didn't want to print this out for everyone, but this will be the code of conduct for the district. My understanding, prior to my arrival, there were several meetings that took place. There have been no dramatic changes through, throughout this book. However, one of the best things that I think that they did do under the leadership of Dr. Alfred and Dr. Hayes is that the, the coding for infractions and the power of school system will make it easier for us to track data. So I think that's the most significant of the changes in this book. And of course, it will be bilingual. There were changes to the acceptable use policy, and I saw Cory earlier, I don't see him now, but there were changes to the student acceptable use policy as has been mentioned with the purchasing of new technology. We have to have a system in place so that if and when there are situations of abuse... We have to have a system in place so that if and when there are situations of abuse, and no one can plead ignorance to knowing what the expectations of the district are. These, except, these changes, of course, have to be read through thoroughly and signed off by both student and parent.
Oh, okay.
And because technology changes faster than we can blink our eyes, I think it's going to be imperative that we look at this document each year to see where we need to make changes. And then have parents, again, and students sign off alike, so that we can be covered in the event that there is a violation that take place, takes place, be it with malicious intent in mind, or just someone being simple. Other than that, just cosmetic changes to wording, so that letters as they go out, the recommendations for expulsion, as well as the readmission, I think some of the wording kind of lent itself to we make inappropriate decisions. I think, I think we took some of those words out so that it would have a smoother flow, but there were no major changes to this document.
And this is going to be in the mood, right? Available to all of us in the mood. All right, anything else, sir?
I'm good to go. I look forward to talking to you on tomorrow.
The director of Wright-Churches, who's the director?
Terry Dinkle. Mr. Dinkle's been in for with the district.
Oh, he's the director and the hearing officer?
Yes, yes. That, that, I think that title serves the same in transportation.
Is that a con?
Yes, we did. No. Remember we discussed that?
Well, the hearing officer part I knew, but I, somehow the director of Wright-Churches.
Just telling you. We'll, we'll, it'll work out, it's going to work out.
You just mentioned the organizational chart. We're going to get another one with names added and plugged in.
I'm certain Dr. Truesdale and Dr. Rossum is going to make sure we get that.
Once you fill the puzzle out.
All chart with names in them. Okay?
Once you fill it out.
Okay. All right, folks, time-wise. Mr. McCord is going to come back tomorrow to finish up something that we did Tuesday regarding home schools and youth activities. But before we go into a motion to executive session, two things I want to address to you. Number one, I'm recommending that as a follow-up to the TAP training that was suggested that we learn something about, and the other, that we meet an hour before our next regularly scheduled meeting, let's have a information session then, an hour before our August 7th meeting, let's have that TAP session. I meant to say that earlier. So I'm going to go and schedule that. We need to have that information. Hopefully you will be back, Grandma, by then.
No, I'm, I'm going to be out of town for a week. Those are the problems, sorry.
Okay. We'll tape it for you.
Okay.
Okay. The other thing is, because we, we are running a little bit behind, and I know we wanted extensive time for the executive session this afternoon, I am recommending, and I'm going to assume that it's not going to be enough time for us to complete some of the discussions that we want to have, that we reconvene an executive session at 8:30 and have our networking, and since we are scheduled to start at 8:30, that we do that, and, and we continue through about 9, 9:15 tomorrow morning in executive session to finish up, because they don't want us to rush to, this is something we've been postponing and delaying that we need to just move on with. So with that, I guess I'm missing something? Am I overlooking anything? I, I need a motion for us to go into executive session, and you have to take your chairs with you unless you want to sit on the floor, that we go in for the purposes of personnel